All right. Good evening. This, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for December 6th to order. If the recorder please call a roll.
Board Member Stapleton?
I'm here.
Board Member Anderson?
So am I.
Board Member Phillips?
Here.
Board Member Leung is absent. Board Member Gonzalez?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Nordike?
Here.
Board Member Lewis is absent. Chair Bennett?
Here. Councilor Hoy, you want to lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any additions or deletions, it appears?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have anyone signed up for public comments, so we'll go to the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item 3.3A pulled by Councilor Anderson.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. Go ahead, Chris.
That leaves us with item 3.1A, the November 22nd, 2021 draft Urban Renewal Agency minutes.
And discussion? Okay, if the recorder please call the roll.
Board Member Stapleton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Phillips?
Aye.
Board Member Leung is absent. Board Member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Board Member Hoy?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike?
Aye.
Board Member Lewis is absent. Chair Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We have no public hearings. Under special orders of business, Councilor Anderson, you pulled 3.3A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
I'm really all in favor of this, Mr. Mayor, and I pulled it to just give better publication and dissemination to the people who are concerned about this. And I think Ms. Rutherford is here to talk about this, but as I understand it, it will address one of the issues that is paramount in many people's minds about the unsheltered people who are out on the streets of our cities, specifically in the downtown. It will be a place where things can be stored. And, you know, there's, there's a visual concern that we've heard expressed from every place. It's not so much, geez, you know, their feelings about homeless people, one on one side or the other, but spot, I don't like to see this out there in the general public. So if Director Rutherford could talk just a little bit about what this money will buy us.
Good evening. Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director. The grant that we are proposing tonight to the Mid-Valley Community Action Agency would be the second grant that we have provided to them for this purpose. We provided a grant a couple of years ago for similar purchase of bike lockers that could be used for storage. It was a pilot project. It's been up and running for around a year now. It's worked well, so people can, you know, check out or reserve, you know, and have control of a bike locker space for their possessions. So we're expanding the program. They have a little bit more space on the property and capacity to administer another 10 lockers. So this will meet, you know, more of the need in the community, but certainly there's far more need than 10 more lockers.
Right. Thank you very much. Any, any discussion on this item?
Mayor Bennett, just briefly, I'm really, I'm really excited to see this. Having served on the Downtown Homeless Solutions Task Force, this was one of the first page items that was identified as a goal. So, you know, thanks for bringing this forward and continuing this, you know, community-backed concept.
Yeah, very good.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? All right, if the recorder please call a roll.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Phillips?
Aye.
Board Member Leung is absent. Board Member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Board Member Hoy?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike?
Aye.
Board Member Lewis is absent. Board Member Stapleton?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. I don't have anything else on the Urban Renewal Agency agenda, so if there's no objection, we'll adjourn the agency and go to the December 6th meeting of the City Council, if the recorder please call a roll.
Councilor Stapleton?
I'm here.
Councilor Anderson?
Present.
Councilor Phillips?
Here.
Councilor Leung is absent. Councilor Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilor Hoy?
Here.
Councilor Nordike?
Here.
Councilor Lewis is absent. Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay, very good. Additions or deletions, Chris?
Yes. I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Stapleton.
On item 7.1A, we have, we've added a revised Exhibit B and Exhibit C was added.
Okay. We'll hear about those as we go into that first reading then. Is that the?
Their attachments that we have available to us to consider before we do our first reading. I had an intent to discuss them.
Okay, great. Anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, any discussion? If the recorder please call the roll.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Nordike?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis is absent. Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leung is absent. Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll move on then to council comments. Any counselors with comments? Councilor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about something I had to do today, which I, I actually have never wanted to do before, but I did it. And I guess I'll start with, with an understanding that I believe that safety is an illusion. It doesn't exist, and there is really no point in time in our lives where we can guarantee that our safety is going to be secure and that those we love will be safe. And so to have safety as a goal is a somewhat fraught goal in mind. So as you all know, we had another school shooting this past week. So far this year, there have been about 140 incidents of gunfire on school grounds this, this year. Twenty-four people have died and 86 people have been injured. Sadly for more students were murdered at school last week, and my heart is broken for those families and friends of the students who lost their lives. My heart also goes out to all those who have lived through or lost someone in a mass shooting over the years. This kind of trauma is not one that is easily healed, and events across the country can be triggering for those living with the trauma. It's also triggering for many folks who have never lived through something like this but hear about it often, or students who have spent most of their school years practicing active shooter drills. My kiddo attends school at Parish Middle School, and this past week, there was a threat made against the school for today. So I want to pause here and say thank you to the person or folks who spoke up and alerted the school. I want to thank those staff members, the principal, Dustin Burnow, and Superintendent Christie Perry, and I'm sure many others. I want to thank the Salem PD who assisted the school in tracking down the student and doing the work to help ensure that school was safe and open for kids today. I want to thank all the extra staff that came in today to help kids feel safe at school. It was a really strange feeling wrestling with this over the weekend and this morning as I helped my kiddo get ready for school. I knew in my head that she was probably safer today than at any other time during the year, as they would have extra staff and people would be on high alert. But I couldn't help but try and memorize her face this morning and log the things that we talked about on the way to school. And I tried not to let that preteen "don't hug me in public" thing not bother me, as I was denied a hug at the door. But it was really hard. It was a hard morning. And our world won't be made better by active shooter drills or bulletproof backpacks. I'm encouraged to see that charges have been brought against the parents who supplied their kiddo with a weapon, who failed to communicate with the school staff, and who laughed off troubling signs their son gave. In my mind, this is progress, but we still need common sense gun laws, and I'm committed to doing that work while I am here. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. I too was prepared to speak on the continued senseless madness of gun violence in our society, but I cannot be as eloquent as the mother who just spoke. But I do have to say that this is a disturbing element to me that is present in our larger society, and it's the parents' participation in this. That's expanding it from, not, not all circumstances, but most of the time, it's the kid takes a gun without the parents knowing it or finds a gun someplace else. But here, the, the parents took part in this. And, you know, to me, that's just another sign of the general deconstruction of our society to violence and, and expressions of disagreement are settled by violence, not by reasoned discourse. That is the way our democracy should work. So that's just concerning. And, and, you know, I don't have children that age, but I got grandchildren that age in Portland Public Schools, and it's just, you know, frightening. Now, I do want to go just to another subject I was gonna speak about, and that is one of the items on the consent calendar. Two of them relate to the airport. And the one that I specifically discussing is, it looks like we are going to be putting electric vehicle charging stations, and even more interesting to me, electric plane charging stations at the airport. So I say, great, you know, we're only putting in two, but I think we should put in 20. So congratulations to Mr. Pascal and the airport management for doing this.
Hey, thank you. Councilor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my sincere gratitude and appreciation to the remarks made to my colleagues. I thank you both for speaking up, Councilor Stapleton and Anderson. I would like to bring a volunteer opportunity to everybody's attention. There are many ways to give back during the holiday season. One that I'm looking forward to in particular is on December 23rd, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And it's going to be happening at Arches, the day center downtown for persons experiencing homelessness. We have several community partners, Kindness Closet of Salem, Beebold Ministries, and Helping Hands Resources Community, and many others are putting on a special Christmas event at Arches. We're going to have food trucks, clothing, hygiene items, and we would also really like to be able to provide haircuts. So if you or someone you know is a certified barber or a hairstylist who would be willing to donate their time to cut hair on December 23 from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we need you. If you have extra clean men's jeans, sweatshirts, coats, and warm socks, we need your donation. If you are a baker and you'd like to bake some Christmas cheer up, we need you. So if you are interested in learning more, I would recommend going to Kindness Closet of Salem on Facebook. If you're not able to locate them, or if you're not a Facebook member, you can send me an email and I'll help you put, help get you in touch with those folks. But it's an opportunity to look people in the eye who are struggling with living outdoors, who have been neglected by the system and who need and want our support. So this is a very easy way to chip in and do what you can during a very, very brutally cold time of year. In other news, I'm excited to report that we at the, earlier tonight, we just voted to approve a grant for the Mid-Valley Community Action Agency to purchase storage lockers. We heard from Councilors Anderson and Phillips, so I will be repeating their remarks. Certainly, you folks can speak in your own right, but we know that folks are always concerned about the visibility of homelessness, things about shopping carts, tents, shelters that have been left behind, unwanted items. But without the ability to physically store these items, there's always a question about what do people experiencing homelessness have in terms of places to simply store the materials while they're going to go see services, going to a job opportunity, and what have you. So earlier tonight, we unanimously agreed to approve a grant to help the Community Action Agency purchase storage lockers. It's a small thing, but not to them. So I'm really glad that we were able to support the Community Action Agency in that endeavor. Last but not least, on a personal note, I am honored and humbled to report that I have been appointed to the Governor's Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission. This was recently approved by the legislature, and my first meeting will be sometime next year in late January. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission, we are charged with the improvement of effectiveness and efficiency of state and local substance abuse, disorder prevention, treatment, and recovery. As a mental health advocate, I know that oftentimes substance use goes hand in hand with mental health issues, but sometimes people turn to unhealthy coping mechanisms to deal with the challenges that they face every day. And so the opportunity to lean into this work to support prevention, to support treatment, to, to support recovery services for all Oregonians is something that I'm very passionate about. And as I said, I'm deeply honored to be a part of this and to be of service. So I'm looking forward to that and looking forward to a very full agenda tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Congratulations on your appointment. Anyone else? Councilor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I think I'm not alone in, in having seen headlines talk about the news regarding the discovery of the new SARS-CoV-2 virus or COVID-19 virus, Omicron. And I just want to kind of face it head-on. I don't have any specific remarks prepared, but it's, it's really too soon to know if this is gonna be, you know, the next Delta. You know, there, there are some reasons, you know, to pay attention closely, like the scientific community is. But for people who, you know, find themselves being, kind of dwelling on that news or being scared, this is very different than a year and a half ago when the pandemic started. We have tools now that we know that they work. So the simple things that you can do is get vaccinated, if you haven't been vaccinated, with the safe and effective vaccines. And if you've been vaccinated but haven't had a booster shot and you're over the age of 18, get a booster shot. While we don't know if these decrease the risk of transmission from person to person, we absolutely know that they decrease your risk of hospitalization, serious bad outcomes, and death. So these safe and effective vaccines, we, the entire scientific community backs them, you know, please utilize them. And the other simple thing you can do is when you're indoors and out of your own personal house, wear a mask. It still works. It always has. These two things can make a big difference. So as we, you know, move back indoors during the holiday times, I just want to reemphasize those common sense things that we know make a difference.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Mr. Powers?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I, I knew this evening would come at some point. After 36 years in city and county management, I am retiring. While I'm not looking forward to six months of snow, my wife and I are moving to Michigan to be near our three children. Working with you, working with Salem mayors and counselors, staff, department directors, and the community has been a real highlight of my career. Salem's use of the council manager form of government is a best practice model of an effective partnership between policy and administration. We have made together progress on community priorities as selected by City Council, priorities that really have improved the, and maintained the quality of life for all Salem residents. I am honored and humbled to be, to have been and continue to be part of that. Any trepidation I have in leaving is lessened by the confidence I have in the ongoing governance and management of the city. My recommendation for an interim city manager is Kristin Rutherford. Kristin has the leadership skills to work with you, the department directors, staff, and the community while the search for the next city manager is underway. She has the support of a strong management team that will ensure the work of the city continues. My last day with the city will be February 28th, 2022. I look forward to the next few months and continuing our work together on the difficult challenges and the amazing opportunities in Salem. I will have recommendations for you for the next steps in the city manager transition at a future council meeting. I am extremely grateful for the opportunity I have had over the past six years to work with you, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I can't tell you how grateful we are for the past six years with you. This has been a highly productive period in a very difficult time with a lot of challenging issues, whether it was water or homelessness or COVID. There's a list of things you've led us on. We have a new police station. We have a remodeled library. I mean, you have just done a tremendous job with us. I wish you the best. I had the chance, as you know, to visit your new home in Michigan, and it, it really is a spectacular place overlooking Lake Erie. Unfortunately, the lake effect blows right in your front window, so I'm still, I'm still marveling at your decision. But we, we will miss you tremendously, and we really appreciate that you have kept a bench so deep that we can have someone of Kristin Rutherford's quality and personality and ability to step forward and be the interim manager while we do what will be, I think, a really exhaustive search. It'll have to be to try to replace you. So thank you so much, Mr. Powers, for all your work on our behalf. Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Powers, I just want to thank you for your service to the city of Salem and to the residents in Salem. I have very much appreciated your guidance and your leadership and your, you know, your friendship over the past five years that I've been on council. And I'm gonna miss you, and I wish you all the best in your retirement. When you told me, I didn't try once to talk you out of it because retirement is a good thing, and everybody ought to do it when they have the ability to, when they have the means, because life is short. And so congratulations.
Yeah. Councilor Anderson?
I join in the comments of the mayor and Council President Hoy, and, and as the city manager knows, I was one of the three counselors who went back to Ann Arbor to check out your bona fides, and I'm the only one who's left on the council. And I will tell you that every single thing that people said to me was complimentary, and every single thing they said about your abilities has been proven out in your time here. This has been an extremely difficult time. A city manager of a city the size is always a challenging position. And then when you add the, the issues that the mayor presented, and I would also add climate change to that, and, and financial issues. And thank you for your leadership in moving us through these difficult times. And we know you will enjoy your retirement. And I'm not sure it's on Lake Erie, though. Would it be on Lake Superior? Lake Superior, yeah.
Did I say Erie? I goofed. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's a, coming from the Midwest, Illinois and Wisconsin, I know the difference between Erie and here.
I bought myself a sweatshirt when I was there at Lake Superior.
Yeah.
Unsalted and no sharks was the theme.
So best of wishes in your retirement, and I hope we can move forward on some of our goals in your remaining months with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Very good. Well, again, Mr. Powers, we just can't thank you enough, and glad we'll have at least a couple more months with you, and we can spend more time telling you what a great job you've done over and over. So thank you. Okay, I'm going to move forward then to proclamations. Well, it's 80 years later, but we're going to again mark December 7th as a somber day in United States history, and where, and whereas we remember the more than 2,400 Americans who lost their lives on that day, including 1,102 sailors permanently entombed in the USS Arizona, and whereas in a speech the following day to a joint session of Congress, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt declared December 7th as a date that will live in infamy. And whereas the events of that tragic day on the Hawaiian island of Oahu at Pearl Harbor propelled America into World War II and gave the nation a resolve that sustained the nation to victory, and whereas, because of that victory for democracy and the sacrifices and suffering endured to secure it, the United States has come to know our enemies of then as allies today. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim December, December 7th, 2021, as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, and encourage the community to reflect on the historic events that occurred 80 years ago and pay tribute to those whose lives were lost, dated this sixth day of December 2021. And then we have, I believe this is the final batch of our volunteer recognition presentation, this is the third anyway, of the 2021 City Council Volunteer Recognition Award presentations. Rather than an in-person event, the past couple of years, we've been delivering the awards in person. These brief presentations have been recorded and compiled by Kathy Erstbrung, a member of the city's communication, communications team. I recently presented awards to numerous individuals and groups, including Outstanding Neighbor Awards to Shannon Prem from Southeast Salem Neighborhood Association, or Cessna, Arno Verstuf, and Darren Brightman, also from Cessna, and an in memoriam award to Steve Van Pelt, who tragically passed away this July. His good friend, Adam Schaefer, accepted the award on his behalf. Steve was very involved with the West Salem Neighborhood Association and contributed a great deal over the past several years until his recent passing. I also presented Salem Spirit Awards to the Minto Brown Island Park Patrol and 50-plus, Center 50-plus volunteers. While these groups perform different tasks, both are invaluable in their tireless efforts to make Salem an even more beautiful place to live, work, and recreate. Thank you, everyone who contributed, who continued volunteering during these very challenging times. It is immensely appreciated. Here's a short video of these five award presentations. There'll be one more presentation featured at the 13th, December 13th council meeting. Well, we're here again to present the volunteer recognition awards for 2021. I have a real pleasure to give a, the award for Outstanding Neighbor to Shannon Prem here in the Cessna Neighborhood, the Southeast Salem Neighborhood Association. She's a longtime member of the Cessna Board and the organization. She's served as chair for more than five years.
Probably seven now, yeah.
Seven. Shannon has been indefatigable in her efforts to bring neighborhood park projects to fruition. Every year, she's promoted tree planting, litter pickups, Cessna participation in neighborhood school, at church events, and Cessna summer festivals in Aldrich Park, which is where we are today on a really windy rainy day.
I'm living in a house that's right around the corner from the house my grandfather built in the historic neighborhood, and I love where I am. I love my neighbors. I love the activities that I have helped create. I love the activities that I have helped create. All of the stuff that I do, I do in cooperation with all my neighbors, other fellow board members, and so it's a combination of energy, and I guess I'm in the middle of spurring it on sometimes.
This afternoon, we're going to be honoring Anad Verstoth and Darren Brightman for work they did in the Cessna Neighborhood as outstanding neighbors in a really outstanding Neighborhood Association. In the past three years, Anad and Darren brought Cessna into the present and future of digital technology. They improved the website. They helped the group establish a social media, a Google platform. They also set up Slack, another communication channel. They have been very busy. It's fantastic.
Well, both of us saw a bit of a need to, especially with the COVID pandemic, being able to get in touch with neighbors is a lot more difficult than you can meet up face to face. And we decided to really leverage free or low-cost electronic alternatives.
When COVID started, and Danny came up with all these ideas to do more outreach to people, get them better informed, but also learn what people leaving here needed, I was all in with the idea to set up those systems and make it happen.
Well, I'm really pleased to be here presenting this recognition and the 2021 Volunteer Recognition Awards. It's to Steve Van Pelt. It's the Outstanding Neighbor Award. Steve was a member of the West Salem Neighborhood Association, and he tragically passed away in July of 2021, descending from the summit of Mount Jefferson. Today, accepting the order is Adam Schaefer. He was a very good friend of Steve's. Thank you, Adam, for joining me today. Steve served as Chair of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, which later became the Welcoming and Inclusion Committee. He helped write a diversity statement that is still included in the Neighborhood Association's monthly agendas. Steve was bilingual in Spanish. He designed, in English and Spanish, printed, and distributed throughout West Salem a "Welcome to the West Salem Neighborhood Association" poster. He suggested and had started a building, and building a packet to welcome new residents to the neighborhood. Steve, who always wore a big smile, was always helping others, whether fixing a car, building a house, or sharing his love and knowledge of the outdoors.
Civic duty and civic life were really important to Steve, and it was a way to express his love for others and for himself was to help others, and that's what he did all the way up till the end, and I'm really proud to accept this award on his behalf, even though it's really hard. And I'll try to remember not the award, but what he did to earn this award as I go forward as well.
We're out at Minto Island Park, and we're going to be honoring the Volunteer Park Patrol with the Salem Spirit Award. Since the inception of the patrol in 1993, the talented and devoted volunteers of Minto Brown Island Park Patrol have given a tremendous gift to the residents of Salem by creating and maintaining a safe, healthy, and friendly atmosphere for all of us to enjoy. Patrol efforts include assisting lost park users, which you can have happen here out at Minto Brown, clearing fallen branches from trails, which happens out here at Minto Brown, reminding dog owners of leash requirements, which happens way too often out here at Minto Brown, and reporting flooded trails or unsafe conditions to park staff. This group donated more than 2,000 hours over the past year. They were able to continue working through most of COVID because of individual nature of their volunteer duties.
We have, I think we've been very successful. The park is a lot safer, both physically and mentally, because we wander around and talk to people and keep out people who don't like to be observed, and we also report all the problems, like the trees that are falling and the leaves that are landing on my head, and anything else that's a problem. We try to direct people to services. We no longer have any homeless people out here because we direct them to services so that they get help.
Well, I'm really pleased to be out on Fairgrounds Road at Center 50 Plus with a large group of volunteers here to present the Salem Spirit Award to the Center 50 Plus volunteers. Not even a pandemic could stop Center 50 Plus volunteers from contributing to the community. 165 outreach volunteers, 40 Friendship Brigade volunteers, and 55 friendly callers, Penpal volunteers, reached out to 1,200 seniors each month with a call or a personal letter. 100 seniors received a daily or weekly call during the pandemic. Many volunteers sorted and packed 8,000 food and necessity boxes for the 40 volunteers who acted as delivery drivers. 14 members of the K-9 Corps made dozens of one-on-one visits and group visits to seniors and their pets. Center 50 Plus volunteers turned out in short notice for yard cleanup after the February ice storm, and they spent days cutting and hauling debris. The center could not do what it does without its amazing volunteers.
Being a volunteer at Center 50 Plus is such a great reward. We meet so many nice people and have actually made a lot of new friends by doing so. We go out into the community with the wow vans. We stay in the building. We pack food boxes. We deliver them to folks that really need it, and it just warms your heart.
Well, thank you again to Ms. Ursprung. She's just done a very nice job of putting these together in all kinds of weather and conditions, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate the work she's done, and we all do, and the tremendous work of these various volunteers. I hope you'll all remember these next year when the Volunteer Awards, we send you out a note asking for nominations for Volunteer Awards. And we can all do this together instead of having me running around, that we can get this put together more as a group like we used to over at the library. So, if it all works out, if we all listen to Trevor, we'll make it. If we don't, we're going to still be wearing masks and sitting alone. So, okay, I'm going to move then, unless there's any comments. Anyone want to comment in that? Okay, I'm going to move then to public comment. We have two folks signed up for issues that are on the agenda. Phil Carver has signed up for 6A. Bill?
Yes, thank you for taking public comment. I also wish to express from 350 Salem to Manager Steve Powers, our heartfelt congratulations on his retirement. I think that's wonderful, and I think he's very much earned it, and I appreciate his work that he did on supervising the Climate Action Plan and helping select the consultant. 350 Salem has been involved in the Climate Action Plan from the very beginning. We helped promote the idea as part of the strategic plan, and we are very happy with the plan, and we encourage the council members to adopt it as soon as possible, and the urgency is because the bond issue is coming up, and there are many elements of the bond issue that can contribute to reducing climate impacts or reducing the greenhouse gas emissions that cause those impacts. And I would like to just point out some overview of the things that could be considered. I can't recommend anything right now, but we'll be involved in the bond process, and I know you'll have a good public involvement process. As far as the fire engines, we'd like you to consider electric battery-operated fire engines, and we'd like you to ask the fire chief to put together an analysis, including the maintenance and operations cost savings from electric vehicles. They're much easier and cheaper to maintain, and the fuel is very, very much lower cost because they're so efficient. In terms of parks, we'd like to have as many parks with operating equipment distributed within walking distance of every neighborhood, especially in Northeast Salem, where they don't currently have as many parks as some of the other areas. And we'd like to have a lot of the money spent on bike paths, especially those bike paths that are not on streets, and Oregon transportation dollars from the gasoline tax cannot be used for off-road bicycle paths or pedestrian paths, and we'd like to see a lot of those, and we'd like to see only the desperately urgently needed road projects funded. We don't, to meet the climate goals, we really have to keep the vehicle miles traveled at the current level and below over time. That's the only way we're going to meet the 2035 goal. 2050 goal may be largely met by electric vehicles, but the 2035 goal is just as important. And so there's several, I encourage you to read the priority actions for immediate action, and remember that the Climate Action Plan, you can do more than is in the plan, even as I know you can do less, but I hope you'll do more, and thank you very much for your attention to this important issue, and I know that many of you have contributed. Three of you are on the task force itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions for Mr. Carver? Okay. Shirlene Gonzalez?
Hello, my name is Shirlene Gonzalez. I'm a resident of Ward 6. Good evening, Mayor Bennett and councilors. I'm here this evening to request that you adopt Resolution 2021-48 to initiate adoption of the updated Salem Area Comprehensive Plan and changes to the zoning of properties as shown in Exhibit C of Attachment 1, with the neighborhood hub on Brown Road removed from Exhibit C. I did submit written comment, just in case of technical difficulties this evening, and also to provide some visuals and some additional context. I want to acknowledge and appreciate all the work of the staff on our Salem project. I know there was a lot of effort forward to make sure there's equitable access to businesses by all neighbors, and the removal of the neighborhood hub on Brown Road will not harm me or my neighbors in terms of access to business. I can walk to my choice of business for meat, produce, bakeries, and I could go on, and I gave you a sampling of businesses nearby in my written testimony. How this neighborhood might harm us is in terms of safety, the likelihood of increased vehicular traffic that comes with the neighborhood hub. And I know the intent of neighborhood hubs are for pedestrian traffic, but it certainly will and could bring more vehicle traffic. Our neighborhood has worked extremely hard to get sidewalks on Brown Road, and so many thanks again to Public Works and all that helped us get those sidewalks. The outcome was not perfect due to some existing property characteristics that would have not been a challenge in a new development, and I have some photos in the written testimony to try and give perspective that you can't necessarily see from the zoning map. And so, none of, we still are really pleased because the sidewalks were an amazing improvement for pedestrian safety for our neighborhood, and that is really the priority for our neighborhood is to maintain those gains in pedestrian safety. And again, we won't be harmed by not getting additional or closer access to business. So, that is my request, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your written testimony. We did get that and have it. Any questions for Ms. Gonzalez? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then to the Consent Calendar, counselor.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. Second by Trevor Phillips.
The consent calendar tonight consists of Item 3.1A, the November 22nd, 2021 draft city council minutes. Item 3.2A, the City of Salem, let's see, the City of Salem has developed a draft, updated Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, and changes to the comprehensive plan, zoning maps and zoning code to guide future growth and development in Salem. This resolution initiates the adoption process for that work, which is the result of the three-year project called our Salem. Public hearings will follow initiation and are expected to be held next year. Item 3.2B, which is the Multiple Housing, Multiple Unit Housing Tax Incentive Program Application by SAMAX LLC, seeking a property tax exemption for a two-unit apartment development located at 227 through 229 Commercial Street Northeast. Item 3.3A, Real Estate Donation Agreement with Ward Development LLC for Acceptance of Property Adjacent to Fairview Park. Item 3.3B, Small Community Air Service Development Grant Application for Community, I'm sorry, Commercial Air Service Development. Item 3.3C, Ground Lease Waiver to Support Aircraft and Automobile Electric Charging Stations. Item 3.3D, Purchase and Sale Agreement with Brenda McMullin for Sale of Property Located at 4730 Liberty Road South, and that concludes the consent calendar.
Very good, and discussion.
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, I thought I would just highlight, I think there may have been a little bit of confusion that we're actually adopting our Salem tonight, or we're doing just for the public's sake, because we're initiating the process. There will be opportunity to provide substantive input in the future, and we will consider that, so we're not making any amendments tonight, but that doesn't mean we won't be doing that during the adoption process.
Well, and it looked like the first big stop along the way was going to be at the Planning Commission for Public Hearings, which folks will want to follow. A great place to bring your discussion. It's often the place where a lot of decisions are made, so you'll want to track this process. So, thank you, counselor, for mentioning that. Okay. Well, if the recorder please call or roll.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung is absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. I'm going to open then the public hearing on the 2021 Unified Development Code Update, and turn it over to who's going to be doing the staff presentation. Norm, yes?
Yes, hi, Mayor. We'll have Bryce.
It'll be Bryce, and I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm going to just...
You need to give the, yeah.
Script here. The City Council will now conduct a public hearing concerning Ordinance Bill Number 1321 relating to proposed amendments to the Salem Revised Code, updating the Unified Development Code and other chapters of the SRC, and a proposed legislative zone change to change the zoning of those properties within the downtown retail office overlay zone that are currently zoned multiple-family high-rise residential, commercial office, and retail commercial to central business. The criteria applicable to the proposed amendments are SRC Chapters 110.085B and Testimony must be directed toward the identified criteria or other criteria the person believes to apply to the decision. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes per association for testimony, and individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. So, we do have 10 people signed up, and if anyone is speaking on behalf of a neighborhood Speaking on behalf of a neighborhood association, would you please identify that when you start speaking? That would be very helpful for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um. I'll turn it over then to uh Bryce, I guess you and Norm to kind of take us through this.
You bet. Thank you, uh, Mayor, uh, members of the city council. Uh, I would just like to say right off the bat too, uh, thanks, Amy. You know, tonight you got the break for not having to read all read all the sections of the ordinance again, but.
Amen.
But thank you again, Bryce Bishop with the City of Salem Planning Division. And I'm here to present the staff report for the proposed amendments before you this evening, which update the city's Unified Development Code. Uh, which is the city's uh combined uh zoning and land use development regulation, which was adopted in two thousand fourteen. After a multi-year process to take the various desperate portions of the code that existed in the past prior to the UDC. And combine them into one unified code that was more understandable, easier to implement. And uh it's just been a better improvement. Um, and since the UDC was adopted in two thousand fourteen, prior to that, there hadn't been an update comprehensively. You know, for thirty years. So once we went through that multi-year process with the UDC, we wanted to make sure uh that we kept the the code more up to date. And so therefore, we plan uh annual amendments. Generally, they're occurring about every a couple of years, actually, routine amendments. And so the last set of updates that the council had reviewed and approved was back in two thousand nineteen. So this is the latest set of amendments that are being proposed to the code to keep to keep the document live and up to date and current. So in terms of the code amendment process leading to the amendments this evening, uh, the work on the amendments started last year. Uh, once the amendments were in a in a uh state that they could be shared, you know, we publicized them through four. Planning Commission work sessions that occurred in the summer uh through June through August. And then once uh those planning commission work sessions were open to the public and uh there were Zoom meetings, of course, uh that people could watch online. And then after the work sessions concluded, uh, we initiated the amendments formally at the Planning Commission. Uh, there were a series of virtual information sessions that were held with property owners within the downtown CB zone to discuss the proposed changes that were being made. Uh, to that zone. Uh, then also, of course, then we required notice as required by state law and our local code was provided. Uh, to the neighborhood association and all uh and affected property owners. And uh to people on our interested persons list, which uh currently is around twenty five hundred folks. Uh, then uh after that, uh, we had a planning commission public hearing on on October fifth. After which the planning commission made a recommendation that was a basis for uh the proposed amendments before you this evening. So as can be as can as can be seen by the ordinance itself, it's, you know, you're you know, very voluminous. And so there are a lot of changes that are proposed with this uh packet of updates. Uh, so I can't go through all of the amendments, obviously, uh, that are included in the UDC uh for this amendment update. But so I have on the next few slides, kind of the highlights of the proposed changes we want to call out uh for the council and the community. So the first big one uh deals with a requirement that was required by state law. And this includes the implementation of the requirements of House Bill two thousand one. And so that was passed by the state. And it requires all jurisdictions throughout the state to allow middle housing, uh, which is uh housing that is this smaller in intensity than multifamily. But more intensity than a single family home. So essentially, it includes townhouses uh that are attached to the common property line. Uh duplexes or two family uses, triplexes or three family uses, uh fourplexes or four family uses. And then cottage clusters, which are individual units that are arranged on an individual lot. Uh, around a common open space uh with pedestrian connections and often parking in the back like adjacent to an alley. So uh the requirements of House Bill two thousand one are very prescriptive, so there isn't a lot of uh leeway that we have in terms of changing the standards. And so uh therefore, kind of the standards that you see in the ordinance are uh the basic standards that were required to implement with House Bill two thousand one. Uh, and those standards generally mirror the requirements for single family because one of the big themes for House Bill two thousand one is to. Uh, remove uh barriers and obstacles to provision of middle housing uh by ensuring that it's not treated any more rigorous or or. Uh, that it's as easy as to do as a single family dwelling. So trying to incentivize that by removing barriers through standards. The that standards and processes could pose. So the proposed bill, you know, intends for local jurisdictions to eliminate those barriers. So essentially, uh, what you see for single family is generally what, you know, is allowed in terms of standards for middle housing. Uh, as part of the bill, there was a new riparian or a new waterway setback that was uh included in the bill. Uh, and that's applies specifically to middle housing. It doesn't apply to single family housing. So all of the existing uh standards in the code that we have for riparian corridor preservation. Um, in chapter eight oh eight, which is our tree preservation ordinance, those will still remain for single family. Uh, likewise, all the setbacks that are currently in the code that apply to single family, um, you know, housing, uh, will also, you know, continue to apply. Uh, the difference here is that for middle housing types, there is the new hundred foot waterway setback uh that was mandated by the state. There was also a requirement that was established back in two thousand six that required any new dwelling. Uh, that's constructed, you know, within an RS zone or an RA zone to include a garage uh for a new dwelling. And so that is a requirement that you we cannot have, you know, in the in the ordinance anymore based on House Bill two thousand one uh either. And so uh a person can provide a garage, but we can't mandate a garage be required. So after, you know, the public hearing at the planning commission, uh, and consideration of the testimony provided, the planning commission did make a further recommendation to staffs. Uh, you know, recommendations for one element of House Bill two thousand one, and that concerns uh the minimum parking requirements. And so under the original proposal, staff had proposed, you know, one parking space, uh, you know, for uh for middle housing. Uh, development uh based on the testimony provided, uh, the planning commission recommended, however, to eliminate the minimum off street parking for middle housing. And then kind of related to that, in terms of parking requirements for residential, they also uh voted to recommend council to approve. Uh, a reduction of the multifamily requirement uh for off street parking from the general one and a half space requirement per unit for multifamily. To one. Uh, that one space would not, however, supersede uh what was previously amended in the code for multifamily housing in the downtown. Area or multifamily housing next to uh core area transit networks. That requirement for off street parking will still remain a zero. This the the one space per unit requirement just applies. Um, outside of the the downtown core and outside of areas that are within a quarter mile of a transit route. So the next set of uh amendments, a highlight of amendments or that are being made to the code, including a series of amendments also to implement. Changes in state law. So the first one is Senate Bill four fifty eight, and this one kind of dovetails with the middle housing requirement. And what it does, it requires jurisdictions to establish a process uh for. The development or lots that have been developed for middle housing to be easily divided into individual lots. So those individual lots with homes on them could be sold uh to increase the opportunities for homeownership. Uh, the middle house, so essentially, if you want to do a middle housing land division, you have to come in with a proposal that demonstrates the middle housing development. That you're going to propose on that lot or the original lot before division meets the standards of the code applicable to that middle housing type. And then uh if it meets those standards, then the the land division part is very, you know, simple. Uh, and then there aren't a lot of standards associated with it because it's the intent is to ensure an easy mechanism to take those middle housing units on that lot. And to put lot lines around them so those homes on those lots could be sold. And so the the land division standards require boundary street improvements as any development would would be required to have. But it doesn't have uh additional requirements for setbacks or other things. So it's just boundary streets. Easements that are necessary to serve the lots for any parking areas that are provided or pedestrian access across the lots. So it's an easy way to further divide uh middle housing to provide homeownership opportunity. Uh, the other House Bill that we're implementing with these amendments is House Bill thirty one oh nine, and that requires local jurisdictions to allow child daycare homes. Uh, in all areas of the city that is owned for commercial or residential use. And also require child daycare centers, which are a little bit more intense than a child daycare home, to be allowed in any z- uh zone in this. Any area in the city that's owned for commercial or industrial uses. So uh when we looked at this bill, we looked at the code and realized that there are a few zones uh that didn't uh meet the requirements of the House Bill. So we've amended those zones to allow child daycare homes and childcare centers in those zones where they're required to under the bill. And then the final uh House uh State House Bill that we're implementing is House Bill twenty five eighty three. And this uh House Bill deals with uh what how a city can regulate occupancy within a dwelling unit. Uh, what it does, it precludes local governments from regulating occupancy based on family relationship. So you're not under the bill, you can't uh specify that, for instance, under our existing code. And then limited number of people are related related by blood or marriage. Are allowed to live together in a dwelling unit and then unrelated people is limited to five. So in order to establish, you know, um fairness between, you know, unrelated and family and people that are related by blood or marriage. The House Bill uh eliminates that requirement. So essentially, uh, the maximum occupancy within residential dwelling units will be based on the building code uh requirements. Moving on to the next set of highlighted amendments, these amendments establish uh a new use in the code that we currently don't have. For managed temporary villages. And so managed temporary villages are uh is a new name for what we are currently citing in the community. For our managed uh temporary uh uh managed micro shelter villages that consist of uh the either the pallet homes. Or other small structures. And so it so it and currently those are authorized only under uh the city's emergency declaration. So in order to take them out of the realm of only being able to be approved under emergence and emergency declaration and put them into the code as a permitted land use. And an associated process for that approval, uh, we've amended the code specifically chapter seven oh one, which is our temporary use chapter. To allow these man- managed temporary villages as a temporary use. Uh, and so there's a host of uh standards. Uh, that are established for them to ensure that uh there's appropriate setbacks and impacts will be minimized. You know, true surrounding properties. And there's also uh social specific social service requirements that need to be elements that need to be provided or services. That need to be provided within the village to help uh individual unsheltered individuals experiencing homelessness. Uh, to get, you know, have some dignity, some, you know, cleanliness through showers and hand washing facilities. And then also to receive, uh, you know, casework and social work services to help them to get out of the the cycle of of homelessness. And so my managed temporary villages have to be operated by a public, a religious or nonprofit entity that has experience operating emergency shelters. They're proposed to be allowed broadly throughout the city, uh, and then within the residential zones as well, but with limited allowance in the residential zones currently. To only properties that are uh on the site of a religious institution. So if you have a church and you would like to operate, uh, or, you know, have a few tents or a few micro shelter villages. On an existing parking lot on your property, you would be able to apply for a temporary use permit to allow that. Uh, we are, uh, in as indicated in the staff report in section twelve, we're based on the comments we've received. From our our community partners that are helping operate these facilities, we are proposing to increase the allowance in residential zones to to include not only. Uh, properties that are the sites of religious organizations, but also properties that are owned by a government entity. So properties that are owned by the city of Salem, uh, the state of Oregon, or Marion, or Polk counties. Uh, so in terms of what's allowed, if you remember back, uh, you know, quite a few months ago, we had a work session and we talked about this. Originally, we had three uh separate approaches, one for tents, one for car camping and one for micro shelters. In order to make things simpler, we've combined, you know, all of those different types into one, uh, you know, one type of, you know, temporary use. And that could then they could include tents, uh, RVs or micro shelters or any combination thereof. There's a maximum limit of forty shelter units and there could be two individuals per shelter unit. And um the in terms of the process that is required for their approval, if you are the have a sh- uh proposed village of a smaller scale. Of ten or fewer units, that would require a class one temporary use permit, which is intended to be a streamlined process that doesn't have the same level of. You know, public notice or uh involvement as other as the the larger villages of eleven to forty units. Uh, for eleven to forty unit villages, those would require a little bit, you know, more rigorous, well not rigorous, but you know, have increased. Procedure requirements and that would be have to follow a class two or type two land use review process, which includes notice to the neighborhood association. Notice to surrounding property owners and tenants. And then also, we also, if you look in the ordinance, you'll see that there's uh kind of a different approach to the services that are required. So in the smaller ones, ten or fewer, you have to have the basic uh resort and uh facilities of, you know, trash collection. Secure storage, hand washing facilities and and restrooms. Uh, for the larger facilities of eleven to forty, you would have to have those same basic, you know, requirements of the of the the eleven to forty or eleven to ten. Sorry, ten or fewer villages plus access to showers, access to laundry. Uh, place to gather on the property and then uh space for social, you know, workers to come in and do casework with. Uh, uh, village residents to to give their uh needed support. So and then, as I briefly mentioned, we're proposing to uh increase where you can operate micro or the managed temporary villages in the residential zones. To include uh government owned properties. Uh, we're also proposing to increase the number of extensions that are allowed currently. We've uh we proposed four uh for a total uh period of five years. Each temporary use permit is good for one year. Uh, but comments that we've received from our community partners, the all the effort uh and the challenge to finding sites and the effort that goes in to. You know, get them get them up and running. They felt that uh five years overall is is kind of limiting. And they'd rather have a little bit more assurance that they could be there for a longer period of time. So we're proposing to increase the number of extensions that would be allowed to to nine. So for a maximum total of ten years. And then um there were some issues with other development standards such as minimum bike parking requirements. Uh, setbacks, you know, from surrounding properties. Uh, so we are proposing uh tweaks to those, further tweaks to those requirements. Based on the concerns that we've heard from our community partners that are will be implementing this ordinance and these uh these permit. Uh, and this type of development as we go forward. We're also proposing amendments to the CB zone, the city's central business district zone. And so the changes to the ZP CB zone include changes to the uses allowed. Uh, some of the development standards that apply in the zone and then also the designer review requirements. So in terms of the changes to uses, we're proposing to eliminate a couple of uses and those include single family detached dwellings and drive through uses. Uh, these proposed uses are are these uses are proposed to be eliminated because they really don't fit, you know, with the the downtown. Uh, division of the comprehensive plan for the downtown, which is like a higher intensity urban, you know, development where you have buildings that, you know, maximize. You know, the entire lot and parking is, you know, kind of minimized. So we've proposed to, you know, prohibit those uses. Uh, in any commercial parking lot, uh, that you'd like to do that would require a conditional use as opposed to being uh permitted use today. Uh, uh, parking structures will still be allowed as a as a permitted use because we want to incentivize the efficient use of land in the downtown, you know, for parking. So it would be better to have it in parking in a structure as opposed to just uh service for parking lots. Where you could have a building, you know, there instead to more wisely use valuable downtown real estate. And then we're proposing to add a new use um to the to the CB zone uh as a special use that has some additional standards included in chapter seven hundred. And this is self-service storage. And so this uh use was um added to address an issue where we've heard. Uh, property owners and uh real estate uh representatives indicating that some of, you know, larger buildings in downtown, it's hard to find a use. Uh, for those um buildings due to the changing uh economic climates and retail. Uh, and and that we've seen with the pandemic and then through online, you know, sales and all those, you know, trends that we're seeing nationwide. And so we've proposed to allow for the reuse of portions of existing buildings in the downtown that that apply outside of the historic district. So the historic districts kind of identified in the core here. So this would apply to buildings that are on properties that are the pink color here. Uh, that are outside the historic district. And it requires the it allows the storage either, you know, in the basement or on the upper floors of the building. There's a total limit on the square footage that's allowed, uh, because we don't want just big buildings to be turned into storage warehouses in the downtown. Uh, there's requirements for active ground floor uses to be provided and maintained on the ground floor to to maintain that sense of vibrancy and activity on the ground floor. Uh, so that's a that's an important change that hopefully will benefit the reuse of buildings and make make sure things the code provides for adaptability. And uh changes as we see, you know, are the market, the markets change. And then finally, uh, we're getting rid of the general retail office overlay zone and the front street overlay zone. One thing that we really. Uh, it became really apparent when they did the UDC originally that is that we have a lot of overlay zones and in the city. And so trying to simplify that, we're getting rid of two overlay zones that apply to property in the downtown. And so on the slide here. Uh, there's the front street overlay zone, uh, which applies along the east side of Front Street for a limited distance. And then also the larger general retail office overlay zone that wraps around the the historic district. Uh, those two overlay zones are proposed to be eliminated. Their main purpose is to establish design standards for properties in the downtown. Uh, even though the overlay zones are being eliminated, we're going to take those design standards, move them into the CB zone. And then uh we've also taken, you know, um clues from some of our other more recent. Zoning code amendments like along State Street where we've established, you know, improved designer view standards to promote. Uh, pedestrian access and urban, you know, design. And so we've taken, you know, some examples of good design standards from those. Overlay zones or zones and also put them into the CB zone to enhance uh the quality of design that we see in the downtown. And that includes requiring parking to be located beside buildings or behind buildings. Uh, have, you know, establishing requirements for upper windows, upper floor windows on building facades and various things like that. Uh, we're also proposing amendments to the city's tree preservation ordinance. Uh, so the highlights for the amendments here include. Uh, one, expanding the definition of significant tree. So currently, a significant tree within the city is defined as an Oregon white oak. Uh, it's actually, it also includes any rare or threatened or endangered species, but we don't have any of those. So the one tree that we do have that is qualifies as significant is the Oregon white oak, which is that is twenty four inches or greater in diameter. That is twenty four inches or greater in diameter, measured four and a half feet above grade. So under these proposed amendments, we expand the definition of significant tree to include Oregon white oaks that are a twenty inch DBH. And then also expanded to include any other tree other than an Oregon white oak that's thirty inches or greater DBH. In terms of we're making changes to the requirements for tree conservation plans, tree conservation plans are required in conjunction with residential developments or land divisions for. You know, residential development. So a partition or a subdivision, you always have to do a tree conservation plan with it. Currently, the minimum preservation requirement is twenty five percent and we're proposing to increase that to thirty percent slightly. So a slight increase to thirty. We're also requiring on those tree conservation plans in association with residential subdivisions and partitions to identify. The critical root zones of the trees. And the reason that is proposed is to ensure that we have better information available to us at the time of review and approval of a tree conservation plan. Because right now what happens is that the the trees can be identified on a plan for preservation. The critical root zones aren't shown. And so what often is the case is once those lots are platted and sold, we'll have. You know, the builders on those lots or homeowners on that have purchased those lots and are building on them, you know, come in to ask for a tree conservation plan adjustment. To remove trees that were originally identified as to be preserved under the plan because there isn't enough room to accommodate the root zones. You know, the foundation will be too, you know, too much into the root zone. And so by requiring that these tree protection zones to be shown on the tree conservation plan will know better. In terms of where those zones lie in relation to the lot lines, the and then once we know the lot lines in relation to the tree, the tree root zones, we can then know what the building envelope is. And so it's just better information, best available science that we'll have to apply to the review of these tree conservation plans. And hopefully by having that information upfront, reduce the need for adjustments down the road because we will have evaluated. You know, whether or not based on what's being shown, the trees that are that are to be preserved on the plan will actually be preserved. And then, you know, in in association of that, once the tree conservation plan is is approved, the lots can then proceed to be developed. And then in in association with that, you'll have to have a tree protection fence or is shown here on the slide here with the orange cell fence. That's required to be placed around the the critical roots on of the tree to ensure that there isn't any ground disturbing activity, parking of vehicles, grading or anything that would occur. Within that that critical root zone. In terms of the planning commission's review of the amendments, they, you know, based on testimony provided to the planning commission recommended that. Douglas fir trees with a DBH of thirty inch or thirty inches or greater be excluded from the definition of significant trees. So that was part of their recommendation. And that is currently included in the the draft ordinance that you have before you. Staff is based, you know, subsequent to the staff report, you know, we recommend as well. And as shown in the staff report, we're making some additional revisions to the ordinance. That beyond what the planning commission reviewed in those. One, you know, require that the tree conservation plan or the tree plan requirements applicable to lots. That are twenty thousand square feet or greater also apply to middle housing to ensure that the standards for tree preservation, the single family also apply equally to middle housing. So that's a requirement under House Bill two thousand one to be consistent between the the two types of housing. And then also our urban forester had reviewed the proposal and had indicated, you know, there are some species of trees in the city that regardless of their size shouldn't be. Identified as significant trees and those include the tree of heaven, the empress tree, the black cottonwood and the black locust. And so I will point out that you will see in the staff report that there is a slight difference. You know, the tree of heaven, the empress tree and the black cottonwood are in are referenced in the report as a recommended tree that should be excluded, you know, from the definition. The populous species, the urban foresters indicated, we don't have, you know, any species of the populace, you know, in our in the city right now. So it's not a tree to be concerned with. But the black locust was identified as an additional tree. So section twelve of the report recommends the changes to the ordinance that staff is recommending. I just want to note that, you know, we want to also make sure we that the black locust is included in that. In that definite revised definition of what is not a significant tree. Then also there were, you know, some concerns that had been expressed, you know, by the urban forester after the planning commission recommendation was made. You know, with it or the Douglas firs are and it should be a significant tree in the city. And so, you know, those, that comment was summarized in the staff report. And so if there was any desire to, you know, have, you know, Oregon white or not Oregon white oaks, but Douglas firs of thirty inches or greater be. Included as a significant tree, a separate motion would be needed to add that back in. We've also proposed amendments to chapter eight of six, six, which is our bike park or off street parking chapter, which includes requirements for bicycle parking. Some of the highlights of changes there is we've expanded or increased the bicycle parking requirement for multi family within the downtown core. And within a quarter mile of a core network transit route. And this is really kind of to follow up on the reduction to parking that we approved through the previous amendment. So. If multi family doesn't have to have any off street parking requirements for vehicles, we wanted to make sure that there is a the ability to require at least one space per dwelling unit. In multi family developments in these areas to promote the use of alternative modes of transportation. We've also proposed to increase the minimum bicycle parking space for shopping centers to one space per five thousand square feet of building area. We've introduced a new long term bicycle parking requirement in the in the in the code. Currently, all of our bicycle parking standards are. Short term and short term spaces by their nature have to be generally outside of the building within a within fifty feet of the main entrance. So by allowing a long term parking, this provides some additional flexibility for like office tenants who don't have maybe customers, you know, coming in all the time and don't need to park their bikes in front of the. The the business, but would rather need a place to park their bikes inside of inside the building in like a bike locker room or in a in a little bit further away distant, you know, distance in a. Secure covered, you know, bike parking area that would be possible under these amendments. We've improved the bike parking requirements in terms of how we evaluate changes of uses in the downtown. To make it easier to meet the bike parking requirements. So today, if you're going to change a use in the downtown, you you generally have to provide additional bike parking. But obviously, when you look at the downtown, buildings occupy the entire, you know, front edge of the lot, you know, there is no area on the site to really accommodate. Bike parking unless unless they were like tucked in, you know, back behind the buildings along the alley, which is not the an ideal place for bike parking. We'd want to generally see those up next to the front entry. And so in order to address that, we've established a standard that says if you're going to any for any change of use in the CB zone. And you have to provide additional bike parking, you just have to demonstrate that there are eight spaces. Available in the block face adjacent, you know, to the building. So from street corner to street corner on that block face where the that the building fronts onto. And if there are eight spaces in that block face, you meet your bicycle parking requirements. If they're not, you'd have to, you know, purchase the additional racks and then. Approach the public works department to get approval to install those racks in the the public right of way to the bike parking need in the downtown. And then finally, we like we'd like to do with the UDC updates, try to, you know, use less words whenever possible and use graphics and, you know, and tables to convey, you know, information. So we've updated our bike parking standards to, you know, have more graphic representations of what the space requirements are, different types of racks. The aisle requirements for access and the spacing standards. And then the final set of highlights, you know, main highlights to the amendments include revisions to. How we keep animals in the city. And so every kind of one of our UDC updates, we kind of seems like we have an amendment to these standards. And so this one. Relocates the provisions for the keeping of miniature swine, which has been in the code for, you know, quite some time. It relocates it from chapter ninety five. Into chapter fifty to be located with the standards that we have in the code for keeping of ducks and chickens and bees currently. So it's just an organizational thing to make it easier to to find, you know, the requirements for keeping of animals. Then other bigger changes we've relating to, you know, keeping of animals is increasing. The types of poultry that may be kept and the number of poultry that may be kept and and the and we're increasing it from the current maximum of six to a maximum of twelve. The additional types of poultry proposed to be allowed are smaller birds of a smaller variety such as pigeons, partridges, pheasants. Doesn't include birds like geese or turkeys or emus or ostriches. So you can't have any big birds. Just birds of a smaller variety. And then they have to be kept generally according to the same standards we have for ducks and chickens. But based on public concern raised during at the planning commission level. The people, the keepers of smaller birds like quail and dove indicated that, you know, the the standard for for the the coop size for. Chickens and ducks, really, it doesn't translate well to smaller birds such as, you know, quills and and does, et cetera. And so planning commission, based on the that testimony, recommended the staff or recommended the staff, you know, further revise the amendments to establish a standard for small birds, which we have done. In the proposed amendments before you. So those are kind of the highlights that then then of course, there's a host of other, you know, changes and they're include changes to some uses of some of the uses that are allowed in particular zones. You know, amendments to improve the land use application and review procedure processes that we have. And then some updates, you know, to additional city development standards. So in terms of changes to uses, we've proposed to eliminate commercial parking as an allowed use. In residential zones that abut commercially, you know, zoned properties. And so today you could have a commercial parking lot in a single family zone next to a commercial lot. But, you know, staff does not feel that that's appropriate to have in the RSO in a in a residential zone, one because of the the housing shortage that we have in the city. And and just introduce in introducing a commercial parking lot in a residential zone can be a disruptive, a disruptive influence in the neighborhood. In terms of land use applications and procedures, we're improving the city's similar use determination process and code interpretation process. To make it more analogous and in line with the review procedure that we have for other land use applications. Currently, the process is very disjointed and confusing. So we've improved that. We're also proposing to remove the property boundary verification process. The reason. There is that we already have other processes in the code that are more that are officially sanctioned by state law there that allow for property line boundaries to be, you know, actually moved. And that includes like property line adjustments and replats. We've also added the transit district to the list of agencies that are required to leave land use notice of any development application that is submitted and any any code amendment. That's proposed as, you know, similar to the one that's being reviewed reviewed tonight. Then also a requirement for a landscaping permit has been established that applies in those situations where a proposed proposal. Includes development on a property, but not development that involves a building permit, but instead like paving of a parking lot. And so in those circumstances, if you're paving or making alterations to a parking lot, there's landscaping required. And so the site plan review decision for that will require the landscaping, but we currently have no permit process after site plan review. To review the landscaping that's required. So this landscaping permit fills that hole and addresses that need. And then finally, some examples of changes to the development standards in the code. During the last update, two thousand nineteen, we established new pedestrian access standards that require pedestrian connections between buildings in the street, between buildings on the same development site. To adjacent properties if vehicle access is being shared between the properties and through parking lots. And so ever over a couple of years of implementation of those standards, we've realized the need to make some changes to that. So we're proposing to refine the applicability, the applicability of the standards, you know, a little bit more narrowly, so not to apply to all development, but certain types of development. And not, you know, require it, you know, like pedestrian connections between buildings, you know, when they're not intended for human occupancy and not needed. So we've made improvements there. We're also adding recognizing transit stops as an essential element of a street, just like, you know, landscape strips, street trees and sidewalks. And so along with that, you know, when we send notice to the transit district and if the transit district. Indicates a need for a sidewalk on the boundary of a property, the proposed amendments would require the the bus stop to be provided. And typically it's one or two concrete pads within the right of way that provide a connection from, you know, people disembarking the bus to get over to the sidewalk. And then another example of a standard we proposed is to, we have existing neighborhoods predominantly, this would apply where you have existing alleys. And undeveloped lots, if you're proposing to build a new dwelling on an existing lot that has fronting on an alley or that has frontage on an alley. That you'd have to take access from the alley as opposed to the street and that what that does, it ensures that you don't have necessarily curb cuts now from that lot onto the street. Saves more space for on street parking and then kind of moves vehicle used to the back of the lot. In addition to the proposed zone change or the code amendments, we have a legislative zone change. And this was its own change. It was going to be included as part of our Salem, but there was a need to, you know, bump it up with this project. Because of the the changes that we're making to eliminate the the general retail office overlay zone. So what we're doing with the legislative zone change. Is to change the the zoning of the properties that are kind of on the right image here that are highlighted by the white boxes. And the white polygons from that are zoned residential, multi family high rise residential, commercial office and commercial retail. To change them to CB to match the the rest of the property, the surrounding property to the west in the downtown. And then this legislative zone change also reflects and implements the properties existing central business district comprehensive plan designation. Because if you look on the left image here, the purple color is all is all property that's designated central business district. And so as you can see, the properties that are in the white boxes or the white polygons, those are currently today designated central business district, but they have zones that are not. That are not central business. So this aligns the zoning of the properties, you know, with the their their comprehensive plan designation. So there was some additional testimony that's been submitted after, you know, subsequent to the staff report being made available and that you, you know, originally saw. We can advance. Those comments include recommend and they largely include recommendations to further recommendations to the standards. And then a couple recommend that the council don't take action on on a couple items. In terms of the recommendations for managed temporary villages, there was a a comment received. One, you know, requesting that the city consider allowing managed temporary villages in the five hundred year floodplain. And also within the hundred year floodplain, when approved under the city's floodplain requirements. The temporary village amendment or ordinance right now precludes temporary villages within a floodplain. And so this would be an additional change to that. And then also there is a a concern that the code be clear that. If any kind of shelter or micro micro shelter on wheels be allowed to be sighted on a site on an either paved or pay or unpaved surface. Today, the ordinance would require that under the post amendments, the ordinance would require that the that the. Micro shelter or the micro shelter be on wheels be on a paved area because it's like a vehicle. So there's a little bit of ambiguity there. So the the there's a desire to see the code further amended to clarify that if you have a a. A micro shelter on a on a trailer on wheels for, you know, kind of as as an example, that it could be on either paved or an unpaved surface. It provides some additional flexibility there. There's also, we got different comments relating to off street parking requirements. One comment received. That's included and that was received today that's included in your packet. Is requesting that the city council only allow or require one space per dwelling unit for middle housing. Essentially to to undo the recommendation of the planning commission. And there's reasons that are provided in the the comments for that. For that request. There was also another comment that was provided by an establishment that. Provides multi family housing for individuals with intellectual and development disabilities. And they are, you know, because parking changes are being made to the code, they are in their aware of the proposed amendments. They've requested that the city council consider changing the parking requirement for individuals with. Intellectual and development development disabilities to be one space per four occupants, which kind of aligns today to our our. Off street parking requirement for low income elderly housing. And the rationale behind that is that these individuals don't drive cars. They, you know, so it's very unlikely that they need the parking. So they're proposing a change there. And then there's also, you know, a comment that was provided that recommends that the city eliminates parking mandate citywide as the the cities have been in Portland have done. There were several comments that were submitted for the record that. Express a concern about this, the proposed removal of the property boundary verification process. They were, you know, they're concerned that elimination of that process will potentially result in, you know, additional cost and delays on projects. So several comments were, you know, asking the city council, do not, you know, implement this portion of the proposed amendments or refer back to the planning commission for further consideration. And then finally, there was a comment received that was recommending that the city council not adopt the proposed changes to the fairview mixed use zone because. They feel that those changes are just an effort to. Implement or to respond to the Luba appeal that occurred in two thousand nineteen that denied a refinement plan. That the planning commission had recommended originally, it was appealed to the council, council approved it. It got approved approved appealed to Luba and Luba reversed the decision. So in terms of the amendments to the fairview mixed use zone, those amendments are intended to address, you know, the issues that were brought up, you know, in that in the Luba appeal and the reversal. To try to align the implementation of the fairview zone more closely with how we've implemented and approved refinement plans in the past, which. When this one that was approved in two thousand nineteen was appealed, it, you know, it was following the normal process, you know, and and in terms of how we evaluate the criteria. But it was appealed and Louis said that staff got it wrong. So we're trying to amend the code to address, you know, that. And so. You know, refinement plans can be approved as we've approved them in the past with the the three that already exist, you know, for the fairview site. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff would recommend that council and. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff would recommend that council and grocery ordinance bill as identified in section twelve of the staff report in advance to second reading. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Hey. Get a chance to talk to Bryce after we're done hearing public comments. So I'm going to move to public comment. I don't know. I don't seem to have anyone identified as a neighborhood representative, but if you are, please identify yourself. But if not, you have three minutes. Let us know at the beginning. And I'll begin with Natalie Janney.
Good evening. I'm not with the Neighborhoods Association.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Mayor Bennett, Councilors. My name is Natalie Janney and I'm a civil engineer at Multitec Engineering. Our office is at one one five five thirteen Street Southeast in Salem. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you regarding the UDC provisions. I understand council's desires and goals with these revised codes. Specifically tonight, I'm going to be talking about density and trees. It's a little like trying to eat an elephant. And as the adage goes, the best way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time. But for the development community, the elephant is being served in one big bite. I could have brought examples illustrating the impacts of this new tree code on developments. But the problem with examples is it's easy to dismiss them as extreme or uncommon when in reality each example is a project with lots developed with the goal of providing homes. The development community is still grappling with changes this to the stormwater code. Frankly, some of these changes are just now making their way through the process down to home builders. On top of that, a new energy code was just put into effect in October and the pandemic and supply chain issues are making materials hard to come by. We are having to make decisions and design projects currently with more expensive materials because it's all that's available to us at the moment. I could elaborate on how the stormwater code increased density and the proposed tree code changes are all in direct conflict with each other, but frankly, I don't have time in three minutes. But in a nutshell, increasing density will increase stormwater, which will require larger facilities, and we won't be able to place lots or stormwater facilities in as many places because of revisions made to the tree code. As an engineer, it is my job to take all of these moving parts and to find a solution. But I'll be honest, we're getting to a real tipping point. There are going getting to be so many restrictions and codes that each subdivision feels like a more and more impossible task. And the thing that is going to give is density and or affordability. And I know this next part is going to offend some of you or upset some of you, but I think it is unfair to expect home builders and developers to just buck up and do all of these things at the same time with no regard to them and their situation. Land development is a risky endeavor and they aren't philanthropists. It's a real challenge. I could give so many examples of how difficult land development is in the city of Salem. And we're already hearing from some of our clients that they don't want to do projects in Salem. And Salem is at a real risk of being surrounded by bedroom communities where people live outside of Salem and drive into work. And that's in direct conflict with the climate action goals that are set out. So I would urge you as a professional who has to put all of these codes and standards from paper into the real world, please just take a step back and realize that the elephant can't be eaten in one bite. I would ask the tree ordinance be delayed while we adjust to the other new UDC requirements. Thank you very much. I'm happy to dialogue further or answer any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Virginia.
Thank you so much for coming down tonight and giving us your testimony. Question for you. From my perspective, I think the elephant for me is climate change. And we've known about climate change for twenty thirty years now. And we've been trying to address the elephant in the room, but nobody's been taking the little small bites. And so now we're kind of to this place where we have to make some, you know, really strong stance as we move to meet our goals. And so I guess maybe I don't have a question. I think maybe maybe I'm trying to state maybe how I feel about the elephant in the room. And, you know, I think my goals are, I guess, my hopes over the last twenty thirty years is that the folks in our business community and our development community would have taken these signs and science really seriously and started to make adjustments as we were going. But we just haven't seen that. For me, we haven't seen the changes in this kind of work that we need to see in order to meet our goals going forward. So I just wanted to state that. I guess I don't have a question. I thought I did, but I think I answered it myself.
Can I respond to that real quick?
Sure.
You sure can.
Um, so I I totally get it. I I remember I have, I probably still have it somewhere. I wrote a letter to President Bill Clinton when I was in the fourth grade telling him that he needed to do more to save endangered species. Like, I'm I'm all for for it. And I I agree, climate change is a real problem. I think the I think what it is 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 there are changes that Salem has made that it's just, it just is a lot all at one time. And so, like I mentioned, the stormwater code, there were changes that were made as a part of that that are just now trickling down to home builders. And I can't tell you, there's not a week that goes by that I don't tell a home builder, no, you really do have to treat the roof runoff from your house. No, this lot, you are going to have to do previous pavement. You are going to have to do this. They're still trying to digest that and make those changes. And those things have an impact on home costs. And so we need a chance for everyone to kind of get used to and digest these changes that are happening on new development. We need a chance to digest that before we throw in this huge thing. I mean, the tree code, it going from twenty four to twenty seems like it's not a big deal, but it is a really big deal. That's going to be that I can think of one subdivision that's already built, so this wouldn't affect it now. But if that tree code had been, it's only a twenty lot subdivision. But if that tree code had been into effect, that would have that twenty lot subdivision would have lost at least four lots, which is a significant portion of that development. I mean, these it has a real impact and and that changes things too for the climate because now you need to find another place for those four homes to go in the city. And where are they going to go? Are they that that just means you're going to have to expand your urban growth boundary and that means more road. I mean, it's kind of, I get it. I totally get it. And I think there's things that we can do as a development community. I just think it's hard when it feels like it feels to the development community that it's all these things at once. And it's just really hard. That's all I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Natalie. Tom, did you? No. Okay, Trevor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Natalie, for talking tonight. I hear that you guys wanted to lay, but if that's not an option, I I hear that you've got some concerns with the the proposed, the staff proposed tree amendment update. And I guess my question is, what is more difficult? Is it moving from twenty five to thirty percent? Or is it the identifying the the root zone? And I know it's both, but if you have to pick which one of those is the more difficult ask?
Um, that's like, you know, yeah, that's a really hard question. I guess I would say probably the root zone would probably be the harder one. Because yeah, that that's just going to be, I'd rather save more trees if I don't have to save. Because right now you have to save around the drip line around the if I'm correct, Bryce can can correct me if I'm wrong. But now we're going to have to, we're going to have to protect out one foot for every inch in diameter. And so it's just going to become this massive area that you're not going to be able to site a home. It's going to, by the time you get the PUE and the setback from the street and you've got this cluster of trees over here and all that, you're you're not going to be able to site a home.
Okay. Thank you very much, Natalie.
Thank you very much.
You bet. And you may want to, you may want to follow up with any kind of written comment that you have on it too. Laurie Fontaine.
Hi, I'm here to request a code change to allow the minimum off-street parking requirement for housing for people with intellectual and and developmental disabilities, ADD, as was mentioned earlier. That I'm requesting that be reduced to the same requirement as low-income elderly housing, which is one space per four dwelling units because individuals with ADD receive receiving housing services through county very rarely have driver's licenses. It makes sense to lower the hurdles to developing needed appropriate housing options for this population. And I view this as an important social justice issue and a housing and climate change issue as well. So this topic is very near and dear to my heart. I retired from a career in social services and I have a brother with ADD and I had a sister with schizophrenia. As her advocate, I dealt with devastating issues of inadequate housing options. In two thousand six, my brother Paul was diagnosed with terminal cancer and he and I had been supporting our elderly mother and our brother Dave, who has ADD, who both lived in the family home. So with Paul's diagnosis and my mother's increasing dementia, we needed to move them to a higher level of care. And Dave's health was very impacted by my mother's decline and he developed a severe eating disorder in response to that. And we found a wonderful assisted living center for my mother, but then I located an ideal placement for Dave in a supported living a home in in my neighborhood. But it turns out the county did not would not place him there and his only option at the time was a a more restrictive group home crisis bed anywhere in the state of Oregon. So we, my brother, so Paul and I believed that would exacerbate his his already fragile health and we couldn't do that. So we moved him to an apartment with where he continued to receive inadequate services from the county until he was finally transferred to a truly person-centered program, Sunny Oaks, that I believe saved his life. And I I don't have the time to tell you about the cockroach-infested life, life, license-infested financial abuse, all the things that my my sister with schizophrenia experienced, but I can tell you how profoundly how profoundly appropriate housing can influence and impact our families. So I I support removing the unnecessary barriers and allowing dedicated respectful programs like Sunny Oaks to develop more housing opportunities for this population.
Thank you. Thank you, Laurie. Do we have written comment from you? I I just can't remember all the, we've got quite a bit of written comment. Have you submitted something in writing on this?
Yeah, along with the Associate Director of Sunny Oaks, yes.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. That really well done. That was very helpful. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Fontaine, for offering your personal story. I really, I really appreciate hearing it and and translating these sort of dry or, you know, codes into real-life examples. It's very meaningful and I appreciate it. My only, I'm 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 very much inclined to support your suggestion. My only slight hesitation is that I wonder about staff in backs. Do you think that there would be, because some of the homes that I'm familiar with, while the residents don't drive, there there have to be staff, right? And the staff members generally drive there. So I'm just wondering if you think that balances out or do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, that I think that's a good question. I had that question too. So with supported living, so the 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 Associate Director is going to address this in his testimony and and it would be clear, yeah, that but the the staffing, it's not twenty-four hour, you know, it's it meets the individual's needs rather than than has a blanket twenty-four-hour staffing, which is, that's a trend toward more individualized, respectful, more independent services. So, yeah, that so there would be fewer cars there because it wouldn't be as many staff.
Thank you.
Uh, Chris, would you handle this for a minute? It's Mark Shipman, then Jared Weekly, then Mike Erdman.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fontaine. Mr. Shipman? Mr. Shipman, you're on mute. We'll start your time over once you go off mute.
I'm sorry about that, Councilor Hoy. For the record, I'm Mark Shipman, Land Use Attorney with Southfield Griggs, two fifty Church Street, Southeast Suite two hundred, Salem, Oregon, nine seven three oh one. Here this evening, not in a formal capacity, but as an individual interested professional who's concerned about the code change with respect to the removal of the property boundary verification process and application in the code. This is a useful tool that property owners have used for years to unify a property that has multiple legal units of land or plotted lots in it. It essentially allows a builder, a essentially a property owner, to be able to take those units of land, do a boundary survey and be able to then pull building permits for that. The process takes approximately six weeks using a surveyor through the city. It's a streamlined process. The other processes that that Bryce was talking about this evening include property line adjustment process or for replat process. The property line adjustment process can take anywhere from from six months or more and the replat process can take a year to over two years. Both of those processes are not as streamlined as the property boundary verification process. So I get it. I know that staff doesn't like the PVV process. I don't like, I know they don't like the applications. But the reality is, is that it is a, it is a very useful tool. And it's similar to other streamlined processes that that Bryce was promoting within the the change to the UDC tonight. And I'm really at a loss as to why we're including some streamlined processes, but we're proposing to eliminate this one. It doesn't make any sense to me. I submitted a letter to you and hopefully that's in your packets. I know you've received a lot on the UDC matter tonight. Just giving one example with respect to the YMCA and how the PVV process helped that organization move forward with their building permits in a timely and expedited manner. In closing, I would request that you either retain the PVV process that's currently in the code and just keep it there or remand this matter back to the planning commission for further deliberations. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. I have a question for you. And then I see Councilor Anderson's hand. I don't know if you do land use matters in other cities, but or not, but I had understood that this part of the recommendation was really sort of a something that was unique to Salem and that other cities really don't have this process. Is that your understanding or is it something different than that?
No, it's it's actually permitted in the state statutes, Councilor Hoy, and we've used this process actually in Amsville and in Staten. So it's so it's predominantly more in Salem. And where you find it is you find it in jurisdictions that have that have old lots, old plotted lots. And where you have property owners, for example, like the Salem Kaiser School District that have acquired properties over the years. Salem Kaiser, for example, at Salem Heights Elementary School has been acquiring property for that elementary school since the nineteen twenties. And every time they acquire a property that was lawfully created prior to the subdivision laws, it was it was a separate parcel. Now the district is having to go through at least seven different property line adjustments over a period of two years to be able to allow the the district to move forward their building permit process, which is just absurd. And yet we're having to do that because staff has taken the position that they're no longer going to allow for the PVV process. The last PVV process and application that we were able to get get through the city was for another school site back in August of two thousand twenty-one. And after that, it just the door closed. We were done.
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony, Mr. Shipman. It's always helpful to get all views of this before we go. I have a couple of questions. Councilor Hoy asked you about other cities and you talked about small cities. What about cities that are Salem-sized or larger? Do they use the PVV process or do they not use it?
Councilor Anderson, we've not done PVV in like in Eugene or our our geographic sphere that we primarily work in is is Mid Valley. And Salem's the biggest, the biggest city in the in that area.
Sure. Okay, thank you. A couple of other things. Mark, did you present this kind of testimony to the planning commission and their deliberations? Or are you just coming to us now? I'm just trying to see if it went through, went through review by the planning commission or not.
No, coming to you now, Councilor.
Okay, then the final question is, we've gotten not just not only your letters, but some sort of, you know, almost cut and paste sort of things where they talk about, don't do PVV change because it will lead to unintended consequences. Have you told us what the unintended consequences are in in your presentation? Or do you have any more unintended consequences that you could let us know about? Or do you have any more unintended consequences that you could let us know about?
I just think the unintended consequences, I did not ta- talk about it in detail, but it's, it's cost. And, and, you know, property owners come in all shapes and sizes. They're for-profit, they're nonprofit, they're public. And when these property owners uh have to go through a process. Like property line adjustments and, and replats, it can, it can add. Tens of thousands of dollars to the project. I liken this to, you know, Bryce was talking a lot about streamlining the code. And, and I love it. I like, I like Bryce's streamlining efforts. I just don't like this one. And I kind of liken it to Bryce has removed out of our toolkit, he's removed the finishing hammer. Counselor Anderson, and he's essentially handing everyone a sledgehammer and telling them they gotta use the sledgehammer now, and it just doesn't work for every project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. Uh, are there any other questions for Mr. Shipman?
Thank you. Thank, thanks for your testimony, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor for our next speaker.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Uh, Jared Weekly?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and thank you, council members. Um, I'm here to speak briefly on Sunny Oaks' request um that we put into the city council to. Um, update the parking for multifamily to include an exception for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Um, Sunny Oaks provides Medicaid services for individual or get-care settings, or more commonly known to the public, as group homes. Um, currently, our system of supports, as Lori testified earlier, is moving away from those larger settings. Um, it used to be common to have group homes with thirteen or more people. Um, now the standard for the state is five. Um, but there's still some larger settings out there that were designed for those larger communities. Um. But as you know, there's also a shortage of affordable housing and also accessible housing for our customers. Um, especially those that are highly impacted by their disabilities. Uh, there's also been some.
Jared, we lost you there.
Oh, rats.
You're back?
Am I back?
Yeah, we lost you.
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I just want you to know, we lost, uh, I think we were talking about the larger units and the housing.
Thank you. The Arizona is quite entertaining. Uh, so larger settings, there used to be some that served thirteen or more people. Those are going away. The state is currently looking at five-bedroom settings for group homes. Um, we're also uh. Received recent guidance from G H S that I, supportive living services should be provided in multifamily dwellings. The idea being it's their own apartment. Um, so with that in mind, um, we're trying, we, it's been very difficult to find accessible, affordable housing for the individuals that we. Serve that wanna live in their own apartments, um, especially environments that have things like rolling showers, accessible counters, hardened environments. Um, or the adaptations we need. So we've been pursuing um transitioning one of our larger properties into multifamily apartment housing. Specifically for the I D D community. Um, and that's how this code amendment came up, um, and the development code came to our attention. Um, we were wanting to pursue the change specifically to kind of clear the way for other people behind us. Um, we were pursuing just an exception. For our one use, um, our one changer requesting. But as we went further down the path and we talked with our board members, many of whom have family with development, all these, they told us this was a priority for them. Um, that the amount of housing is just in short supply, it's not accessible, it's not clean, it's not. Um, safe and that the goal would be to move more towards less boundary or barriers to accessible housing for the population we serve.
Uh, Jared, are you, are you done? Are you still there?
I'm still here, sorry.
Oh, good, okay. Uh, Jared, can you answer Counselor Hoy's question uh from earlier about staff? And maybe add to it, uh, regular visitors? How, how, how is that accommodated? Are you thinking of like a percentage of the parking requirement being reduced or how are you?
We didn't have a specific ask. It was suggested that we go with the um same exception for low-income seniors because it's a similar. Um, structure in terms of the power services are provided. Uh, people live in their own apartments, they mostly don't own vehicles. Um, so that parking available would primarily be utilized by staff and by family, not by the individuals themselves that live there. Um, yeah, and then staffing, as Lori testified, works differently for supportive living. Most people are used to group homes where you. You have to staff there twenty-four hours a day, they have a vehicle. Um, our supportive living. Program, we have staff that arrive by bus to the person's apartment, um, or by vehicle, depending on this, for a limited number of hours. Um, I think one individual we serve is five hours, we have people that go much higher. Um, but we're not there for an entire day. We're only there for a brief period of time to provide the services they need to remain in their own home.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Counselor Nordine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh thank you, Mr. Weekly, and thank you also to Ms. Fontaine for your impassioned testimony tonight. I wanna make sure I understand what it is that, that you are asking. It sounds like you are asking to change the parking space requirements for housing for people with I D D. To reflect that of similar properties for low-income seniors. Am I tracking so far?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and what is that requirement for housing for low-income seniors?
The part. I believe it is currently one space for every four residential units.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Sit. Check that one with Bryce too as well, Vanessa. That's a, that's a really good, good question, I think, to help us understand.
Yeah, that is, that is correct, Mayor. It is one per four, you know, units.
Okay, great, thanks, thanks Bryce. Um, great, anyone else want to talk to Jared?
I don't, it, I have a, now I have, uh, Mayor Bennett, if I may, I guess I have a follow-up question, but I'm not sure if it's best to ask. Um, Jared or Bryce?
Bryce will have in front of us uh at the end of this, so it'd be directed to Mr. Weekly. We try anyway if we can. What you got?
Well, the question is just, is this, is this something that would, is, is there like, we have to change what staff have already proposed?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that verification.
Yeah, great. Thanks again, Jared, very much. Uh, Mike Erdman?
Uh, good evening, uh, Mike Erdman, Home Builders Association of Marion Polk County's, uh, twenty seventy-five Madrona Avenue, Southeast. Wish I had more time tonight to talk about our strong support for the uh middle housing code changes. But I'm gonna spend my three minutes really talking about the, the problems we have with the tree ordinance changes. We strongly believe that the city's existing tree ordinance is more than sufficient in protecting and planting trees during development. And really, that's backed up by the, uh, by the fact that Salem's tree canopy has been growing steadily without the additional measures that you're considering tonight. You know, the city did a, uh, an urban tree canopy assessment report two years ago. And it showed that Salem's tree canopy actually grew from covering eighteen percent of the city in two thousand and nine to twenty-four percent in twenty eighteen. You know, exceeding even the city's established goals. When you look in that report, it shows that the neighborhood association boundaries have the most residential growth. You know, South Gateway, Southwest and West Salem were the ones that showed the most growth in tree canopy, which is no surprise, given the, the planting requirements that come with development. So we believe that the current tree protections are working and working very well. Simple fact is really that Salem has one of the least affordable housing markets in the country. And we've got an affordability crisis that's driven by a lack of supply. And these changes are gonna make it even more difficult for the industry to provide housing, especially on the land in South and West Salem, where we deal often. With heavily treat sites that require a lot of slope issues that have to be regraded. Now, the biggest problem we've got with the, with the changes before you is the requirement for the protective fencing around those root zones. And as mentioned earlier, those, those fenced areas are a foot radius or two-foot diameter for every inch of tree width. So a twenty-four-inch tree takes a forty-eight-foot diameter fence circle completely off limits. Uh, to development during regrading, that you'd need to make the site buildable, creating streets that meet fire code requirements. Uh, creating flat building pads so you can put homes there. And of course, during construction of the home. You know, those large root zone protections make it really, really difficult to site the home on the lot. You know, most of our lots today are sixty or sixty-five feet wide, and so with these, these fenced-off areas, they really likely eliminate the ability to put a home on many lots. And of course, in other communities, you know, builders can deal with that or developers can deal with that by making the lots bigger. So you create room for both the tree and the house, but with the comp plan changes you've got coming before you soon. We're gonna have those much greater density mandates that pretty much make this impossible. So i- if these, if these revisions are, are passed without changes, we're gonna see a number of sites in Salem that really won't be developed. And so our supply challenges, our affordability challenges are going to get worse. You know, I've already heard from developers that are passing on specific opportunities to buy sites in South Salem. Because they really believe that with these changes to the tree ordinance, those projects become unviable economically. And I know of at least one site that's had many buyers pass up, uh, ha- pass up that site for the same reason. In closing, I'd just say that, that while we'd ask you to reject the changes, at the very least, we simply ask that you remove the root zone protection requirements. On the non-significant trees. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, have you done, uh, your organization an analysis at all of? You mentioned sites, uh, you know, I've, I've heard of, I know of, I've talked to. Has there been any kind of analysis, uh, uh, or? Something that brings some data to the table in terms of what this is going to do for land availability? Now and over time, I, I, I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, it's very hard to do that kind of analysis, of course, because everything is very site-specific, but uh, and, and as I mentioned, like conversations with developers. That are looking at sites that are on the market right now. Uh, we've got developers that have done numerous developments around town, but normally would have bought these properties, moved forward. But they said, you know, gosh, with the number of trees on site, with the protections that will go into place, it just doesn't make sense. And so they're passing on that. And frankly, kind of focusing their attention outside the city. Uh, I know of one parcel that's got at least three folks that have looked at it and turned it down. Uh, just knowing that with these new changes, they just can't do it. I, I wish we had data on, on the rest of the, on the rest of the land within the U G B. We just don't.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming, Mr. Erdman. I always appreciate testimony from everybody, like I told Mr. Shipman. Um, you know, Mike, you, you talked about, you know, you're, at the very least. Remove zone, uh, root zone protection from non-significant trees. Um, and, and I'm thinking, Mike, back to the uh hospitals development of the old, um. Uh, a school for the brine property, they didn't have any kind of root zone protection around the significant tree, a big white oak. And they destroyed the root zones and that tree went down. So you could potentially live with. The significant trees being protected in the root zone. You're, you're just really concerned about the much more, um. Uh, prolific, non-significant trees being protected as well. Is, is that a fair reading of what you're saying?
Well, Counselor Anderson, I, I appreciate that. I mean, frankly, I think we'd love to see, uh, to see none of the root zone protections because canopy's been growing, but. Frankly, I think we've got to find a balance. We've got to strike a balance between the need to develop within the U G B so that we're protecting farm and forest land outside of it. Uh, with the desire to protect trees. And so my thought has been that perhaps eliminating the root zone protections on those non-significant trees. Maybe one way to strike that balance.
Okay, okay, yeah, we, uh, we has, you and I know we've had many conversations upon this. It's a. It's a whack-a-mole kind of problem, and I, I appreciate your, your testimony here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we, do we have that proposal in writing, Mike? Uh, has that been submitted to us, that? Uh, the zone around non-significant trees? Anyone else have questions for Mike? Thank you very much. Um, Evan Mandville?
Yeah, hi, thank you. Um, Evan Mandville, for the record, three, four, five Lefell Street South. Um, over the last sixteen months, my family, much as many of yours, have suffered through three extreme weather events. Uh, we spent several days trapped inside our house due to smoke from wildfires. We spent a week in February without power due to ice storm. And we sweltered during the hottest heat in Salem's history during the heat dome. This is the reality of climate disruption, and I was lucky. I had resources. I wasn't one of the dozens of Oregonians who died during the heat wave or thousands made homeless by wildfires. Uh, but it's an early chapter in the story we are collectively writing of climate disruption, and we have a deep moral responsibility to rewrite. Future chapters. One thing you all can do uh tonight, to ironically use a driving analogy, is take our foot off the gas. Uh, parking mandates, minimum parking requirements are the gas pedal in this analogy. Various studies have confirmed basic economics, people buy more cars and drive more when parking is omnipresent and free to them. Uh, the draft climate action plan identifies parking reform as a key step in reducing pollution. So tonight, the U D C update takes some important steps in rolling back Salem's parking mandates, but you could do even more. Uh, by removing parking ma- mandates for multifamily development altogether. Uh, you've heard tonight's thoughtful testimony asking for reductions or waivers for proposed development of multifamily housing for people with disabilities. But the easiest thing to do to encourage this development and other multifamily development we desperately need is simply reduce parking mandates to zero for multifamily development. Remember, one of every six renter households in Salem are car-free. Builders should have the option not to overbuild parking their renters don't need. So I encourage you to take the city's parking code off the proverbial gas in climate disruption and make that amendment. Thank you for your time and your service to the city.
Great, thank you, Evan. Any, any questions, Tom?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Mandville, and, and your testimony a while back. Uh, convinced us to remove the parking mandates in the downtown core, and that was very helpful. But I will tell you that a lot of the, 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 the outer from the city core, neighborhood groups are saying. You know, we've got apartment complexes in our neighborhood, you remove the, the parking requirements. Uh, the next one is built, isn't gonna have any, it's gonna be parking on our street, there's gonna be all sorts of problems. I just wonder if you could respond to that. Uh, uh, you know, concern from the neighborhood groups about parking on their streets.
No, cer- certainly. Um, you know, we, we have decades of experience in deregulated parking a- across the country and across the world. Um, and my experience is developers will build what's demanded. Uh, and meet the, meet the thing. There's an example of student housing on the edge of Corvallis where they're building two point six. Units per, spaces per unit. And this is student housing, um, so that they're building a bunch. And that, that's really what the data have shown, um, from L A's downtown, from Buffalo, from Minneapolis. Um, people build parking, uh, when that's what their consumers want. Um, and I, finally, I would say, you know, if the choice is, okay, we have some on-street parking versus climate disruption. Uh, and, you know, I, I'm gonna choose on-street parking. Like, that's, that's a pretty easy choice. Like, I, I understand it's a prob- it's, it's a frustration, but um, if we're really gonna get our handle on climate disruption, we have to. Take some small sacrifices and deal with those things.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh, Elliot, uh, Lepinell?
Hi. Uh, I'm Elliot Lepinell. I live in Ward One and my comments concern the H P two thousand and one implementation. Counselors, I am very happy about the changes to the U D C that will allow more kinds of housing and mandate less parking. Somewhere around forty or fifty years ago, I think we got a little confused about which kinds of things the private market does. The government should encourage, which kinds of things we should discourage. Years ago, we made certain kinds of housing illegal to build and thus more housing, made more housing expensive. So that now a quarter of Salem renters are paying more than fifty percent of their income in rent. And for reasons that I don't know if anyone fully understands, Salem, like many cities, decided that one thing the private market would never produce enough of. Was parking. So now we have parking lots where housing should be. I think a good rule of thumb for deciding what to subsidize would be to ask the question, is there a charity anywhere on earth that considers this a worthy cause? I know of housing programs, I don't know of any, like, parking program. If people knew how much they were paying for parking minimums through higher costs of housing goods and services, I don't think anyone would support them. I can't, don't think many people have any idea if you said, what does this cost? That's too hard a question. Fortunately, these policies are fairly simply, simple to reverse, and H P two thousand and one is a great step forward. By allowing more kinds of housing, people will pay less in rent than they would have otherwise. By reducing parking minimums, people will also pay less in rent. Both are among the most important things that Salem can do about climate change, and they will bring in additional revenue to boot. This implementation is a great start, but I hope we think about why we are making these changes. Now that we know that making certain kinds of housing illegal is bad for everyone, perhaps we should follow that train of thought a little further. If parking minimums make rent more expensive. If parking minimums make rent more expensive, what effect do we suppose they have on grocery prices or lost tax revenue? Or in whole businesses that don't exist because they couldn't make the parking minimum work? More and more cities are realizing that parking minimums are not helpful at all and thus getting rid of them will bring in many benefits. I think a good next step would be to consider the downtown advisory board's recommendation to move to paid parking downtown. This is an exciting direction the city is moving in. Uh, if we continue in this direction, Salem is going to have a bright future ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone got any, any thoughts? Okay. Thank you very much, Elliot.
Thank you.
Uh, Eric Olson? You're on mute right now, Eric. There you go.
Hi there. I'm, uh, Eric Olson. I reside at fifteen twenty Gwynne Street in Monmouth. Um, I've been a real estate developer for progressive, sustainable neighborhoods for twenty-five years. And I come to speak, speak about the new tree ordinance, which is under consideration. I've made some comments about other parts of the U D C revisions, uh, in the planning commission and that's in your packet. First, let me say I'm a big proponent of government moving toward smart solutions to climate change. It's real, it's serious. And if we don't do something, much of the world, as we know, will be gone forever. I may be an outlier in our industry, so I appeal from a different point of view. From a practical standpoint, small properties of under, uh, five acres with some trees will be very challenging to develop into compact, sustainable developments. In two thousand four, I built a compact development in Salem called Fairmont Cottages on Rural Avenue in the Fairmont Hills. We built thirteen houses on one point five acres. There was fifty, uh, fifty-plus trees on the site, most of which came down. Having gone back and looked at this project in light of this discussion, under the cu- criteria of the tree orden- ordinance, we would be lucky to squeeze four similar-sized houses on the same site. In order to propose this development, we had to in- invest approximately a hundred thousand dollars upfront to submit an application for this P U D, Planned Unit Development. The proposed language in eight oh eight oh three five D four, uh, in terms of how you can, uh, get permission to remove trees, it says not less than thirty percent of all trees located on the property, uh, be designated for preservation, provided however that if less than thirty percent of all trees located on the property are designated for preservation, only those trees reasonably necessary to accommodate the proposed development shall be designated for removal. It would be unlikely for me, or really most developers, I would expect, to risk this kind of upfront cost and investment in a project with such soft and squishy standards. I would not take on this type of innovative cottage cluster if this new tree policy was in place today. I am concerned that this proposed tree ordinance will, A, reduce density and put pressure on our urban growth boundaries, moving more housing to the edges, not green and not sustainable. Further reduce affordability of housing, not good, assuming we support affordability. Critical root zone requirements will lead to more trees coming down, as I pointed out in my planning commission testimony. And finally, further push development outside of Salem, potentially actually increasing the overall, uh, carbon footprint and not decrease it. It's very ironic and disturbing if this were the case. Thanks for your time and your services, counselors.
Thanks, Eric. Eric, I've visited that, uh, rural street uh, cluster several times. Uh, tell me a little bit about what the, what it looks like now after you had gone in, you'd cleared, done quite a bit of clearing, built the, the houses, the way they sort of center on those interior, uh, grassy, uh, vegetated areas. Did you plant a lot of trees in there? My recollection of it was that it is fairly lush. And can you talk about that? Uh, that was something that I, I heard other, others talking about. Uh, Erdman talked about it as well, the, the, the tree planting requirement and then the growth of trees over time.
Yeah, well, we preserved a couple of, uh, pretty significance, uh, significant trees, but it would be, um, I mean, we couldn't hit the standards. We couldn't, uh, protect, uh, a couple of trees. Uh, we wouldn't have been able to maintain the, uh, the critical root zone. Um, and, uh, it's lush mostly because it's probably more appropriate-sized landscaping for a, a shared sort of village, uh, village green space.
Okay. Thank you. Tom?
Uh, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Olson, and thank you for the developments that I've seen of yours around town. I really appreciate what you do. Uh, I guess my question is, what's your alternative proposal? Do you, do you, is there somewhere like you heard Mr. Irma talk about, you know, only around, uh, uh, substantial trees and, uh, or protected trees and not about all, all other trees? Do you have any sort of, uh, the potential solution to this that wouldn't go as far as you're concerned that the city, uh, is potentially going in the tree ordinance?
Uh, well, I think the, the, the critical root zone, uh, issue is very significant. Um, the, the problem is it's, it's nuanced. And as, uh, as the earlier engineer from, uh, Multitec was speaking about that, it's every project, I mean, with the property that we have left in, in Salem or most of the property we have in Salem, it is very difficult. Uh, everything requires a rel- relatively creative solution. And, um, uh, in order to create density, which I think, you know, in, in terms of, in terms of, uh, our car- carbon footprint, if you read all the, the literature on it, and I'm a support, I mean, I, I've, I'm a proponent of doing what we can to, to, to sort of bend the curve. But, um, what I don't think we're, we're really, uh, looking at is what's really going to happen to our density in the city? Or what's going to happen is, uh, as, as Mr. Erdman was talking about, we're basically going to end up just, uh, uh, these pieces of property are just going to hang out there and we're not going to develop them. And it's, and I don't think that's really ultimately good for, um, uh, creating the sort of, um, a, a, a kind of urban density that we need, uh, for our city.
Yeah.
And so, and so it, it, it requires a new, so to answer your question, Mr. Anderson, that, the every site, um, is, uh, faced with challenges. And, um, sometimes it's very possible to preserve a good chunk of the trees. And I think we should do it when it's possible. But the problem is, um, is as developers, you also have to be able to make it, uh, make it pencil out, be at least economically viable. And sometimes if we, if this sort of carte blanche approach to a tree policy makes it very, uh, uh, difficult to sort of approach each project creatively. So I think we need a little bit, I think we need a little bit of time to review, uh, the tree policy. I think there have to be, there has to be some sort of, uh, uh, a way, a, a, a very steeply graded site is much more difficult because when we build subdivisions now, um, we have to move an awfully lot of dirt. And so it's really hard to protect trees in that kind of application. Flatter sites, it's much easier to protect it, uh, protect trees. Um, and, and, and so just to have a, have a, a percentage, uh, is, I think, a little bit too simplistic of an approach.
Would it be, uh, possible to have something, uh, brought to us by next week, uh, that kind of addresses your grading and the kinds of issues you're talking about and maybe gives us a better picture of what this, uh, what this ordinance represents in terms of our land inventory, uh, of, uh, particularly for housing?
Yeah, I think we, I think, I mean, I think the, uh, H B A and, you know, Mike and I and, and, uh, people that are directly affected, uh, by this, I think could, uh, probably put together some, uh, information for you, yeah.
Well, I think that would be helpful anyway. Uh, Virginia, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thanks for coming down, Eric. It's really, uh, nice to meet you. I don't think we've met yet. Um, I guess I, I want to pose you a question that Counselor Anderson asked, uh, another person about parking, and that is, I hear a lot from my constituents that we as a city are not doing enough to protect our tree canopy. So what would you have me say to them? What would, what would be some of your ideas for when I talk to people who are frustrated with the lack of protection for our tree canopy and, and they see all these trees coming down or these trees being moved? Or, or all of these things to make way for this, uh, development that we need, but yet we're trying to, again, find balance. Uh, what would you have me say to those folks?
Well, um, I think there are a number of things that we could do. I mean, our stormwater, uh, i- is, our stormwater requirements are creating issues for, uh, uh, our development, the amount of space that it, it takes. So that's a, that's something that we have to at least, uh, consider. Also, street standards are, are, make it so that, um, uh, we can't often, um, uh, sort of creatively design developments because the city of Salem has very, you know, relatively wide streets that makes it, uh, uh, difficult, radiuses that, that we have to satisfy. And so by the time you ha- you put all this cr- overlay all this criteria on our, uh, uh, bill, uh, on our, uh, sort of the layout, it really becomes, um, we're, our, we're so handcuffed, we can't, we can't do anything. And so basically, that's why properties become, uh, um, basically, uh, economically not viable. So, um, I think, I, I think we could put together a list of things that the city could do. Um, but it's very difficult when a whole bunch of, uh, requirements are, are overlaid. If, if trees are the number one thing that we want to figure out a way to solve, I think we can do it. But a- as in any type, any type of a problem-solving, uh, system, you've got to, uh, potentially make other compromises.
Sure, yeah. And, and I was part of the subcommittee who worked on some of the, um, how we're going to get this code and, uh, climate change to all kind of come together, to work together. And I know that we looked at minimums for developments and we took out all of those things that you were talking about, right? We took out the land that's going to be needed for roads. We took out the land that's too steep to be built on. We took out the land that was in the critical root of trees. And all those things to try to help developers have the tools they need in order to get the housing we need and protect our waterways and our trees, provide for the streets that we need. So I felt in that subcommittee meeting that we really came to a good understanding of, we understand that the land that is left to be developed in Salem is tricky and complicated. We also need all of these things done in order to meet our goals for climate change. How can we do that? And I really felt like we came to a good understanding, but what I'm hearing from you is that that is not, um, that is not what we came to, that in fact, um, maybe everything is just too, too much for you at this point in time.
Um, I, I, I don't know if it's too much. I, I'm just, I'm just trying to kind of articulate the reality of the situation. And, and I'm not really, I mean, if, if we think we need to, to, to implement something like this, then, then so be it. But I think there's some significant ramifications that council, the counselors need to be aware of that will potentially, um, uh, have adverse, uh, um, uh, an adverse situation that we're not necessarily predicting right now. That's my concern.
Okay, Mayor, I just have one more question for Eric. That's okay. Thank you. Um, so you had mentioned that you are, um, in kind of the business line of, uh, understanding sustainability and, and, um, and all the different things that we're talking about tonight. Um, and earlier tonight, I talked about over the last twenty, thirty years, how we haven't, you know, we've really left this up to the market and we haven't seen what, what we've needed to see. And, and you're coming here saying that you're one of those people who really, um, have tried hard to meet the needs of our community and the needs of our climate and environment. Um, are you also frustrated with, with where we're at today and that we've, it's kind of led us to this place where, you know, we wouldn't need laws if folks did the right, the thing that was best for the community, for everybody involved. We kind of find ourselves at that place where we're needing to make, um, some laws here that are really going to protect our communities and the environment. Um, are you as frustrated as, as maybe I am here or you want to speak to that a little bit for me?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, uh, I, I, I'm a big believer that, that we can, um, solve problems. Um, and that we do have to make sacrifices along the way. Uh, and so my only point about the, the trees, uh, the, the tree subject right now is that I, I don't know if it's really going to, um, solve a, a problem. I think it could potentially actually create more problems for us. But yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about the, the direction, uh, uh, you know, not just of Salem, but of, of the country and the world, you know? I think it's a, it's something that we have to be very mindful of. Um, but problems are, I, 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 sometimes we tend to oversimplify and I, and I fear this is an o- oversimplification of a much more significant problem. And I think it takes, it will take a little bit more, it should take a little bit more time and energy to really figure out what we can do to really truly bend the curve for our, uh, part of, uh, helping with, uh, climate change.
Thank, thank you very much, Eric. Oh, I'm sorry, Trevor?
Thank you, Mayor and, and Eric. Uh, I just thought of a question. Um, so we, I was on that subcommittee too, that was looking at trying to achieve our goals, um, with zoning changes. And I do recall that, um, you know, it came up, but the tree ordinance was going on a different, like, track. So, um, you know, I appreciate your comments and your perspective tonight. I mean, this is, this is challenging. I think staff was trying to capture, you know, a lot of the will of what, you know, the policy that we as counselors had wanted. Uh, but it sounds like the, the critical root zone is a bigger deal than maybe, uh, you know, we, we, uh, realized. I mean, I'm not sure if that's true, but it's possible. Um, I mean, I guess my question is, we're, being on that subcommittee, I, I re- recall stating something to the fact that, uh, as a counselor, I would like it to, there'd be flexibility. That if you had, as a developer, a proposal that was for more density or affordable housing, um, that met other goals that would help us reduce, you know, our, our, uh, C O two, uh, amounts and, and our impact on this atmosphere where we all live, um, that I would like to have flexibility when it comes to, you know, significant trees. As the tree ordinance is written right now, do you see any of that flexibility where we would, you know, allow for, you know, significant trees to be removed?
No, I, I had a big section that I was going to talk about, but with three minutes, I couldn't, I couldn't go into that, but I think that's spot on. I think we need to have that kind of flexibility built into it so that it really does articulate, because it's, climate change is one thing, but affordability is another, density is another. Um, I think, I think it needs to be a, a much more layered approach. Um, so I think, I think you're spot on and I think it, it could, uh, we could really improve what we've got right now and, and actually make a, a significant difference.
Yeah, so I don't have a proposal to get there. And I think that Mayor, uh, Bennett had brought it up, that we're, we're looking for some, you know, concrete language to, to add, to strengthen this. I mean, just to speak briefly, I think it's really frustrating as a resident of this community when we see the ineffective, what feels like it's ineffective, you know, fence go around a white oak that then dies after the development happens. So if we're going to protect something, we want it to like live, you know, to give it a really, like a good fighting chance. And if we're gonna not, you know, let it live, then you might as well, you know, bring it down. So if we could, um, you know, codify that flexibility for staff and for everybody, that would be my desire.
I, I hope, uh, Eric, it's clear that, uh, uh, if you all can come in with something that helps and, and, and I know the spirit, your spirit's there on this, uh, but try to help us through this. Uh, we are looking at acting on this at our next meeting. If that timing doesn't work, uh, let us know. Uh, but, but it strikes me, you all have thought about this and dealt with this. As Counselor Stapleton mentioned, we're talking thirty years or, you know, there are, there's been long-term discussions here. If you all can come up with something, I think it would be very helpful. Uh, at least as we talk about this issue, because we'll be talking about this, uh, next week. So if, if that's possible, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, uh, uh, put together some ideas and, and, uh, talk with others in the industry.
Great. I think that would be helpful. Uh, and keep in mind what you've heard from, from the council. I know you will.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, anyone else? Donald Davis?
Good. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. All right, so, uh, my name is-
You're Donald Davis.
I am Donald Davis, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, yeah, so I am a resident in Ward Eight. Um, I have been listening to and, um, interacting with the, our Salem, um, vision plan. And, uh, I just want to say that there has been a lot of good work done and a lot of long conversations had, um, regarding various aspects of this development. But, um, throughout the pro- planning process, I always was advocating for a reduction in parking minimums as that would help reduce the need for, um, for, uh, developers to, of course, manage their parking situations with the critical root zones as well as, um, just generally be able to fit, um, part, fit housing onto spaces within our, um, developed land. And so I just, um, again, would just want to advocate for consideration of, um, how parking can in fact- wanna advocate for consideration of um how parking can in fact, impact the abilities for developers to um to meet our housing needs that we have.
Great. Excellent. Any, any questions for uh Mr. Davis? Hey, thank you very much. Uh Charlotte, uh Vo- Valet?
Valet.
Valet, I apologize.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, whoops, it says that, okay. Uh, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um my situation is not maybe as major as everybody else has. Um I guess my video isn't.
There you are.
Okay, there we go. Is not maybe as major as other topics that you've talked about. But mine has to do with the um change in the amount of 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 chickens specifically on a piece of property. I live in an area that has been built, uh it's been in existence now about seven or eight years. And they're very small lots. We have a ten-foot setback between each house. And our lots are very small. And I, when we moved in, there were no chickens in the neighborhood. And subsequent to that, about four or five years ago, our neighbor purchased chickens, much to our dismay. Um but I understand that city code allows that. My, the problems that that we have had through these ensuing years has been um having to do with flies, with the smell, with rodents coming in. And I've had multiple conversations with city members coming and talking to the people, and they were trying to fix things with them, and they made a proper coop and all of that. But when I saw this come through to say that now they're allowing double the amount of chickens on a piece of property, I was just flabbergasted. I thought, doesn't anybody, has any of you on the city council lived right next to, or has chickens of their own within about a thirty-foot setback? When you have a little, well, when you have a little small yard and you want, you know, you fixed it up nice and you can't sit out there because of the smell or because of of all of that coming in, the flies, you can't enjoy your backyard. I just would really request that the council members and or whoever, the city planner or whoever is dealing with this, to really think about those citizens who live on small lots. Um, isn't there some way for the city council to uh require that you only are allowed a certain number of poultry or or whatever type of bird per the size of your lot? If you have a larger lot, by all means, have as many chickens as you want. But if you have such a small lot to enjoy your retirement in.
Yeah, no, I understand. Time, I I will tell you, the time's up. I live on a very small lot, close in.
Yeah.
And my neighbor has has chickens. I'm familiar with uh but I'll tell you, one of the things I've discovered is uh if if they're managed appropriately, there is no smell, there are no flies. The the real challenge is the survival of the chickens from the raccoon raids seems to be the biggest challenge.
I suppose that could be too. But if you don't have a neighbor who is particularly um
Yeah.
careful about cleaning up and doing those things, there's not a lot a neighbor can do.
Yeah.
You can call and call and call, but um I I just, and that's not what I'm what I'm wanting to complain about, although it is a complaint, but I want the city council to really look carefully at, if you make those changes, it seems like it would be better to say, okay, if you have a lot size under eight hundred or around eight hundred square feet in your backyard, you know, maybe you should be limited to four chickens or five chickens, not twelve.
Well, I really appreciate you coming down. This is an issue that has been in front of this council over and over for, I don't know, ten, twelve years. So
I, I'm sure it has.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
You're welcome. And I understand that people want them for their own food. They want to be able to sell them. I understand that. But that would be my suggestion is
Okay.
adjust it to the size of the lot.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, Bryce. Anyone got questions for Bryce? Bryce, let me ask you one about that downtown area. One of the why, did you all look at uh some sort of incentive or something dealing with some persistent vacancies we have downtown, including vacant, huge vacant half lots or quarter lots? We've got uh buildings that have been vacant for ten, fifteen, twenty years down there uh that are are just not in any kind of productive use. And one of the things that other cities have done is look at a, whether it's an incentive or a disincentive program uh to get those properties uh back in use. Uh that's a lot of downtown property right now, or appears to be, that is being underutilized. Have you, did you guys look at that at all?
Uh, you know, we we didn't per- particularly. I think, you know, the the market forces themselves, you know, the CB zone is very flexible. It's, you know, allows a wide variety of uses. So, you know, the vacancies in the downtown, I don't believe are necessarily related to, you know, zoning restrictions.
No, no, it's not zoning. It's the, it's the owner. I mean, it's real simple. I I don't think we have to look too deeply to figure out what the problem is. The question is, is there a way to incentivize getting those those properties on the market rather than having them just sit there empty? Because the, you know, the property tax is low, it's not a real, you know, they're they're underutilized. I I just wonder if it'd be worth it at some point to take a look at that. I I, it's one that I notice on a fairly regular basis.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I don't know if all the answers would come from planning's toolkit. You know, there is other financial incentives, there are renewal and
Yeah.
But uh, yes, we didn't specifically address that or look at that with these amendments.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Nordite?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I actually think you raise a really great point. And I would love to see city staff follow up on that. I get it if there are periodic vacancies from time to time, but if if it's prime downtown real estate and it's been unoccupied for ten years, I mean, surely there must be something we can do to incentivize or disincentivize, as you say. So I would be very interested in having staff explore that further.
Great, thank you. Coub- Councilor Hoy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, Bryce, for all your great work on this. But I have a, probably we'll have a series of questions. I'll probably just start with a couple of them and let I see other hands up. So wondering, um, these aren't in any particular order of priorities, so don't read anything into it. What are your thoughts on the uh parking requirements when, as it relates to people with disabilities? What, are you thinking that there's somewhere in there where we could come up with a workable um alternative to what the staff has proposed?
Yeah, I thi- I think, well, we, as they testified, we were suggesting, you know, the low-income senior housing was it was an analogous parking requirement for it. So we're, we would be supportive of that.
Excellent. I I think you can anticipate a motion on uh for an amendment of something like that at some point in the very near future. Then the next one I had, then I'll I'll turn over to others to get to worsen, some more substantive things off the table. Um have you thought about the lot sizes as it relates to uh foul, foul?
Uh, no, we did not, you know, the those are, those are, those are valid concerns. That would be a good strategy, uh, you know, if, you know, but you know, because I think, you know, the six that we're at, you know, it's generally okay. We don't get a, we don't get a lot of complaints. And Lisa May, you know, Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, the Deputy Planning Administrator in Urban uh Director may can speak more to that. But you know, it's a, it seems that the chicken program is working, you know, the the foul po- the poultry and the foul, including ducks and chickens is working today. Uh, you know, the increase of from six to twelve, you know, you know, I one of the big impetuses for the change was smaller birds like doves and, you know, pigeons, you know. And so it, you know, I don't know if if the concern was necessarily to have like, you know, a bunch more chickens, but you know, smaller birds, you know, the six, they're small, it doesn't, they're small birds, you don't get as much meat or or you don't get as much opportunity from them. So that was kind of the push for that. Uh, you know, it's something that could be explored. You know, bigger lot size or bigger backyard area for coops, it's some birds.
Thank you. I wondered what it would take to give Ms. Anderson Ogilvy uh to turn her camera on. It was the chicken question. I love that. So, thank you.
Yeah.
I I I will just jump in. I know, but I wrote the chicken stuff this time around and worked with the folks that that wanted that. So I know Bryce didn't want that answer. So Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, you're planning administrator for the record. Um, there is a setback though. I wa- I was just checking the code um during the testimony. There is a requirement that somebody's coop is twenty-five feet from their neighbor's house. Um so there is already some separation and it's not really dependent on your lot size. And um I think uh I will echo what the mayor said. When this first came up, um I checked with our code compliance staff, like, do we really do we really want to allow twice as many chickens? We want to allow quails, that kind of thing. And and they said, um, just like what the mayor said, that if somebody is actually taking care of their poultry um in the right way, then they don't really have any impacts. And if they're not doing it in the right way, then you get the smell, you get the flies, you get rats, that kind of thing. So I would encourage um folks if they're experiencing that in our neighborhood to contact the code compliance staff because we can, you know, enforce on that and 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 try to get that situation cleaned up. Um, the twel-
Thank you. That was my next question is, what's, what's the remedy for somebody like our, the person who gave testimony? What's the remedy? What do they do? I mean, I wouldn't want to, if I had a backyard where the smell was bad or something, I mean, I wouldn't want that situation either. So what's the remedies? Call code compliance?
Yeah, absolutely.
Go off the online firm.
Compliance and um, you know, they don't, you don't need a chicken license anymore. Some of you have been here a long time now. That we first started, it was a chicken license. And so we go out and inspect the coops. Uh, we don't have the license today, but it's just, it's just, you know, allowance in the code. Um but if we get a complaint that somebody's not following the rules, whether their coop, coop's too big, it's too, you know, too close to a property line, the smell, that kind of thing, we will go out um and investigate that and work with them to to try to remedy that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jose?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I want to go back to the uh, uh, the home building. And I wanted to thank everybody for their testimony. Appreciate them hanging out. You know, one of the things I just, I noticed is that there's like a narrative out there, the one about the builders uh against the city. Like if the builders lose, we win, something like that. And, you know, it's false because in current world that we're living in with the lack of housing, really, the only people that are losing are the people who do not have stable housing. And on one end, we're trying to reactively um bring as much housing as possible into the city. But on the other end, we're making it sort of harder, that more difficult, tricky to build. Um, sometimes also here, you know, the ones that are building, the houses they're building are too expensive. You know, but the connection that most people don't because that the future occupants of those homes are gonna vacate their home, which allows that another family to move in. And sometimes one sale really triggers like a a chain of three or four moves, right? Um, and the reason that developers really don't lose, in my opinion, is because they can just go build somewhere else, you know? But I did want to share some data points, um, because I know some people like actual numbers. And on the sale side, Salem, uh the Willamette Valley currently has a one and a half month supply of housing. So what that means is that if there were no new listings, no new houses that come on the market at the current rate that houses are selling, in a month and a half, that supply will be gone. Um, a normal market is four to six months, you know, so it's, it's scary low, right? And uh on the rental side, things are a lot scarier. I've mentioned this in the past, but when we are offering homes for sale, it's scary. We get thirty to fifty inquiries over a weekend. And the ones that are the saddest are when we offer one bedrooms and studios. The people that are calling us, you wouldn't believe this. We all have some college-educated young people with pretty good jobs, and they're in hotel, local hotels. You know, so I think if anything, I just want to make sure that the staff that we all don't see builders as adversaries. You know, because it's really gonna be hurting the ones that are trying to get into stable housing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I think that Bryce or maybe Lisa could answer either one of these. And like Counselor Hoy, I have a number of questions, and I'll ask one or two and then, you know, let's-
And let Counselor Hoy ask some.
Yeah. Uh, my, my first uh question is um, your response to the the issues raised about the tree zone root protection, particularly uh vis a vis substantial protected trees and other trees and the third, you know, if you could just give a response to that. And again, I'm, I'm mindful of what happened at the School for the Blind when there wasn't root protection. And that big oak, because build, that when they were building it, they were running over the roots and compacting the ground, and that tree died. You know, so I I I just like your response to uh um eh, how that affects, you know, uh um protected trees versus non-protected trees. And then kind of a secondary part of that question is right now, uh what we're proposing is one side fits, one size fits all. So I'm wondering if some of the issues that Mr. Olson brought up, you know, a very steep lot or or some other kind of issues that that uh, is there any way to have any kind of exceptions? And I'm particularly thinking of, uh, you know, the, this is not residential, but the Costco thing where the issue was the the white oaks and whether or not it would be economically feasible to build on that lot uh around the white oaks. And maybe there's some sort of analogy that can be drawn to individual houses, you know? We heard Mr. Olson about the development on rural there, that he wouldn't have as many there if he had to look at the trees. Uh, you know, I don't have any view of that right now, but I'd just like to see what your response to those, those issues are.
Well, I would, I would take a shot at that counselor. And then if Lisa, she has any, any information, of course, she can follow up. But, you know, so in terms of the significant tree, uh, you know, the critical root zone uh is important. So if 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 a tree is gonna be designated to be preserved, uh, there are, you know, if you develop in it and you do certain things, you you disturb the roots, you compact the soil, all of those actions, if you're within it, will, you know, cause it to to eventually have, you know, lo- you know, possibly long-term to decline and and eventually die. And so, you know, I think under the ordinance today, it's like, okay, you designate the tree to preserve, you know, to be preserved. If it's not an oak, you know, it doesn't have the the tree protection zone requirement around it, like, uh, you know, like ghosts do, you know? But so normal trees, you save the tree. If it's, if it survives, well, that's great. If it, if it doesn't, I guess, yeah, you gave it the best, your best try. And so there are situations under the tree ordinance today where you had trees that are, you know, be, are designated for preservation. They're being excavate, you know, the root zones are having excavation occurring in them, you know? And so, you know, the the trees are there, you know, today, you know, the lots are being developed, but down the road, ten years, it could decline. And so like Counselor, you know, Phillips, you know, mentioned, you know, if if you're going, you know, if we're gonna save the tree, we really want to save it. If you're gonna do something that's gonna, you know, you know, result in it dying, it's like, well, might as well just, you know, take it down. So there's that consideration. So if if we were to just go to, you know, significant trees, because the code today is significant trees do need to have seventy percent of the root zone protected. And so seventy percent is like the bare minimum standard, you know, it is, and we do have um Milan or uh Mylan with us, Davis, the City of Urban Forester, he could jump in and advise as well. But, you know, our understanding is that seventy percent that we have in the code today is kind of the bare minimum, you know, of what you need to pres- yeah, you need to preserve, you know, to ensure a tree can survive. We're proposing a hundred percent, you know, in the, in the proposed amendments with the caveat, you could go into that, you know, root zone up to thirty percent to the seventy, you know? So you could act, you know, get, go into that area some with an arborist report. And as long as you follow the recommendations of the arborist report and you take special measures to grade and, you know, so you're not gonna damage, you know, damage the the tree and cause this long-term decline. So we'd have flexibility there. Um, if we were to, you know, not extend the tree protection requirements to all trees as proposed, you know, certainly there would be, if you, you know, there'd be a lesser, you know, grouping of trees that would have to have that. It would be the oaks. And then also any other tree that's thirty inches or greater. So that would provide some flexibility. Um, you know, in terms of the one-size-fit-that's-all, you know, approach, yeah, we don't currently have, you know, in the true ordinance today, provisions that deal with uh, you know, if the, if the cross slope of a site is over a certain percentage uh that you could have, you know, any breaks in the tree preservation requirements. It's just, you know, it'd be twenty-five percent today preserved, up to thirty percent under the proposed amendments. Um, you know, I-
But we do, but that is where the criteria comes in, right? So tree, tree conservation plans do have criteria. Mr. Olson read them to you. You can go below the twenty-five percent today or the proposed thirty percent if there's no reasonable design alternatives. That's what the criteria is today. We do approve some that go below twenty-five. Um, it's generally for slope. Um, it's either slope or an existing street that's stubbed in or utilities that have to just go in that section, right? They, there's no way to develop without removing those trees. There's no way to develop without removing those trees. So that that is that flexibility that exists today in the criteria for tree conservation plan that is proposed to remain in the future.
So what you're saying is we already have flexibility built into the code. And and I'm specifically thinking of Mr. Olson and also Mr. Erdman, who who, you know, seemed to, especially Mr. Erdman, seemed to say we're not going to be able to build anything if we've got this rigid requirement, but what you're saying is there is flexibility already into the code.
The the criteria would allow them to drop below the thirty percent, just like it does does today. I don't want to dismiss their concerns. These are, this would be greatly increasing our tree protection, you know, requirements, tree preservation across the city. You've only heard testimony from developers, but I will point out that this is a tree ordinance that would apply to all trees across the city on already developed property in your neighborhood, commercial property everywhere. Though there will be, you know, a lot more large trees will be preserved. And and the reason we're really interested in increasing the trees that we consider significant, the beyond the Oregon white oak, is really looking at climate change. Yes, there is replanting requirements and so new subdivisions, they plant, you know, four or five new trees on the lot and that's great. But the amount of carbon that a large tree takes from our atmosphere is much different than what little new trees can do. And although we want both because we want to continue to have tree canopy in the future, preserving our larger trees is really more significant. It's specifically called out in our climate action plan as a strategy for addressing climate change.
Thanks.
Mayor, you're on.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Sorry, I I apologize. I I want to just follow up on something you said, so I I think folks need to understand that. I wasn't sure it was clear. Are you saying this would affect trees on private land if people want to remove large significant trees on private land right now on their lot? Uh, that would that would not be allowed?
I'm saying that if they have a very large tree that falls under the definition, the new proposed definition of significant, then they would need a permit to remove it and they would have to show that they meet the criteria for permit. And today, that generally only applies to Oregon white oaks.
Right.
You know, trees around a creek, for example, or very large undeveloped lots, something like that. But this would be.
This would be on any lot, any private property would would be affected.
The trees are big enough to be significant, yes.
Okay, great. Trevor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and and Lisa and Bryce for the clarifications. I have I have several questions and I'll try to remember my big ones and get to those first. So, I mean, I think that one of my highest priorities when I'm looking at the, I think you guys have done a good job of trying to, you know, codify what the will has been expressed over time from this, you know, board of counselors and the policies that we've, you know, put down as strategic plans and so forth. So I I appreciate those efforts. I I thank you for trying to push this issue because I agree with you. The science shows that the larger trees are some of the most important mitigate mitigation efforts that we have for capturing carbon and reducing the heat island effect, which is, you know, you got green leafy canopy and you you have less likely to have a heat event that's dangerous in your specific neighborhood. So so thank you for doing that. I guess my my first big question is, the place where I start to get a little less confident that we're doing the right thing in in moving this this assertively forward is just when it comes to like affordable housing or really, you know, a little more dense, like multifamily or even, you know, like apartment complexes. Is there anything that is, are we able to with an ordinance capture flexibility when it comes to that type of a project? So for like, you know, cottage homes or multifamily or, you know, like apartment complexes, are we are we able to have a tree ordinance that specifically designates that as a different concept?
Yes, um, yes, you would be able to do that. We generally kind of treat trees all the same across the city. And then we have, if you're doing, you know, a subdivision, then you have a different kind of set of tree conservation plan. We do have already, though, in the code, for example, tree variance. So somebody can, if they don't meet one of those buckets or categories for for a tree removal permit, you can ask for a tree variance today. And it's about, you know, the feasibility of developing your land, the economic feasibility. So there's already some provisions and applications people could go through to show there's some unique reason why they don't need to comply. But if what you're saying is multifamily, for example, should be exempt, that could be written in there. I don't know that I would recommend it. Multifamily removing Oregon white oaks has been some of the most controversial cases we've had at City Council. I I know Counselor Leung's not here, but she will mention some in her ward to you, so. It it could be done, but that's not the proposal today.
I would add too that real quick that the 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 thirty percent preservation requirement for all trees on the lots, that does not apply to multifamily or commercial development. It's only land divisions. Uh, that could that would be used for single family, two family, three family or that middle housing type. And any multifamily or non-residential, it's just, you know, protecting significant, you know, significant trees that fall under the proposed definition in riparian corridor. Like Lisa said, trees on lots of large lots and parcels, essentially.
And and then if I can, I have a follow up question specifically on this. So we're we're looking at doing two relatively significant things that really stand out to me. We're looking at moving from twenty five percent conservation of of trees to thirty percent. And then we're looking at expanding the root zone from the bare minimum of seventy to a hundred percent. And and what I'm hearing from the developers is with that root zone is the bigger issue. So, I mean, do we have any sense practically speaking, like in trying to, you know, get as many of, you know, important trees for all the great reasons that we do need trees in our community? Is it really like, is it enough to just say that the significant tree zone is actually going to protect enough trees? Or do we need both the the expanded tree protection zone and a bump up to to thirty percent to really make a difference?
I think that the biggest change really is adding all trees that are thirty inches or larger as significant. That's going to affect much more trees across the city. Just doing that on its own, I think, is is a huge improvement to our tree preservation requirements. The twenty five to thirty percent in a subdivision, you know, it just, it seems like thirty, you know, trying to say some more would be good. But if the council decided to keep it at twenty five, I think that would be okay. Um, we do really struggle with the the root protection, so we get lots of complaints from neighbors that are watching development happening, you know, near them and saying, uh, well, they've parked their trucks under the trees. There's no fencing around here. What's going on? And we go out and if it's, you know, significant tree, if it's an oak today, then we have, you know, okay, put your fencing out. Why don't you have your fencing? And they get that. For the rest of the trees, right now, the code doesn't even say that you need fencing. And even the fencing that we do require for the oaks isn't necessarily enough to protect the trees. So we do a lot of tree conservation plan adjustment applications. And so that's when they've started building and then they've realized that they can't save the tree, the tree's dying. Oh, it looks like it's going to fall over. Well, why is it going to fall over? Oh, we've damaged the, you know, the root zone. It's not really clear, but we've heard that there was trucks driving around, they were grading. Um, and there was never fencing put up. And so in the end, we might start and bring in a subdivision to council and say, well, they're saving forty percent of the trees. They meet the twenty five percent. But at the very end, by the time that subdivision is done, the amount of trees saved usually drops below twenty five percent through the different kind of adjustments of their building. They do plant more trees, so I'm not going to discount that. But it's not, it's not a great system right now when we don't have the requirements that they actually preserve the trees that they say they're going to preserve. It's disappointing to folks at the end for us to tell them the tree is going to be saved and then it's not actually saved.
This will be my last question tonight on this specific issue. Where do we stand? Like, where would this stand compared to like, you know, Eugene, Bend and other communities? Like, are we a little behind? Are we a little ahead?
I think we're behind. Yeah, I I believe that we're right. We're definitely behind Portland. I mean, Portland has some extremely, uh, they just require a lot more on all aspects of development. So I'm not advocating that that, you know, we we duplicate them. I I believe Eugene is ahead of us and has been for a while on tree preservation.
And and just to clarify this clarification, that is the moving to what you're proposing gets us to more similar to Eugene? Kind of, I mean, like.
Oh, Lord.
From what I understand, I mean, you know, all cities kind of tackle it differently.
Okay.
But, yes, we don't preserve that many types of trees. I will say too, there's not been any discussion. I just want to point out that if they save significant trees in a subdivision, they get credit for that under the proposal and they don't have to plant as many new trees. So we wanted to, you know, give them credit for the fact, because right now the code just counts a tree as a tree. So if you saved a fifty inch oak and you needed five, we still make you plant four. It doesn't matter that you saved a a ten inch apple tree or fifty inch oak or whatever. We discount them all as one tree. So we did make it, are proposing to make a change. So if they save a really significant tree, then they don't have to plant as many new trees. And obviously, when you save a large tree, you have less space on your lot as well for new trees, so.
Okay, thanks.
Virginia?
Thank you so much. Yeah, just listening to all this conversation, one, all my fellow counselors are having great questions. And so a lot of them are, my questions have been answered already, but I did want to say that, you know, I think what the mayor brought up about doing this infill in downtown and having this redevelopment is so important right now because we're not cutting down trees in order to redo these areas. And we're, you know, look at Nordstrom building, we're getting a hundred and fifty seven units out of that, what is it, half of a city block? So I really can't say enough about incentivizing more redevelopment downtown in the areas that have already once been developed and how can we repurpose those areas for housing? Um, I did have some questions about, um, one about parking, but I guess I'll ask that at the end since we're kind of in a tree mode right now. And I wanted to ask a little bit more detailed question than what Counselor Phillips asked, and that is moving to thirty percent. Is that is that aligning us more with how other other cities are doing this or are we still below what the percentage that other folks are are going for here?
Honestly, Counselor, I would have to check again, for example, what Eugene does. I'm not sure that they have the same kind of system with the tree conservation plan through a subdivision where it's a percentage like we like we do. I just know that we're fairly behind as far as what we consider significant and only looking at Oregon white oaks right now.
Yeah, and then a question about, there was incentives for developers to keep those big trees and 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 building that in. Is there any kind of fee or charge when they come to us and they say, we're going to save forty percent and then they even go below the twenty five percent at the end of the day? Um, is there some kind of, I guess, negative response to that kind of event?
No, I mean, each time that they want to amend the plan, there's an application fee. Part of the the kind of disconnect that the that we struggle with is that the developer is not necessarily the builder. And so at the end, when someone's bought a lot and they come in and they say, well, this tree, and I can't save it, it's clearly declining, it's, I can't, I can't build a house and sell it with this tree here. They're not necessarily the right person for us to try to penalize at that point. And so then instead, it's more about evaluating that tree, making sure that there's adequate replanting for that tree versus a year or two ago, a developer, maybe they did the subdivision and and didn't protect the trees adequately, so.
Yeah, I'm really interested in understanding, and I don't think science has come up with a way for us to do this, but understanding the carbon capture that's happening within these large trees, within the root zone, within the soil, that that root zone is securely in. Because I think that we haven't, we, without kind of a a means of putting a value to that for our communities, it's hard to grapple with things like this. I will, I'll just move to my parking question. And and we heard one talking about disability parkings with units, one to four units. And then we also heard folks talking about just taking off the parking mandate citywide. Now, would would doing the latter address the the first one or would we need to still have separate things for both of those ideas?
Um, if we didn't have a minimum parking requirement citywide, then that would solve the problem for the Sunny Oaks development. The council has tackled parking for multifamily, right? We've reduced that in twenty twenty for, you know, downtown along major corridors. We've looked at parking again in the R Salem zoning subcommittee. And then I think I've mentioned before that the state climate rules are looking at parking and their draft rules give cities kind of a, I call it choose your own adventure. You can either remove all the parking and be done, or you have to do all these different things, remove parking for certain types of uses in certain places, charge for your on-street parking in certain situations, monitor your parking, et cetera. Um, as those rules get finalized in the spring, we will bring those, you know, we'll evaluate them and bring them to the council. And if it's still kind of a choose, choose your own adventure, we will ask the council which which way they want to go to comply with that. Obviously, the council could remove minimum parking requirements on your own at any time, citywide or for any use, really. Uh, we do still have maximum parking. And then, of course, when you remove minimum, it doesn't mean people won't build parking, which Mr. Mandel, you know, stated. It just really leaves it up to the market, but we do always impose maximums just to make sure people aren't going a little too crazy with the parking.
All right, last question for you is that we've asked how we're comparing with tree protections. How how are we comparing? Where are we at when it comes to parking? I know it is, you know, one of the number one things we can do for climate change. How are we doing as a city? Are more cities our size moving towards just getting rid of all of those mandates?
Um, I think cities are struggling with that. I think it's controversial to get rid of minimum. And so I don't, I don't think that's unique to Salem. Some large, you know, cities across the country have done it. Cities where transit is is more readily available, I think, than than it's maybe easier in those situations. But no, I would say Oregon cities aren't far ahead of us. And I think that's why the climate friendly rules at the state level are addressing parking, because if cities were were doing it themselves, then they wouldn't have to. There is significant pushback from from cities on the climate friendly rules. So again, that's why I don't know how how they'll end up and what what this LCDC will eventually adopt. And so we have to wait and see, but but I I think that we've done quite a bit in the last few years with the multifamily, eliminating parking downtown along our major networks, room and board, some other uses where we've dropped the parking requirement. We've also added in a lot of different ways that people can provide other things and then have reduced parking. So provide, you know, covered bike parking or bus passes or shared parking spaces. So I think we've made a lot of progress in the last few years around multifamily parking, particularly. And then the planning commission is recommending that you go a little further and reduce multifamily parking to one space per unit. Um, when you're outside of downtown, outside of the core network, it's one and a half right now. It's one or one and a half depending on how many bedrooms you have, but they want it just to be one. And then they're recommending that we don't require any parking for middle housing, so.
Great. Thank you. Tom?
The trees and away from the parking lots. And I want to talk about PV, PBVs. Uh, I was interested in what Mr. Shipman and others were taking, were talking about and unintended consequences. I'd just like a staff response to the issue about what do we do about eliminating PVVs? PBVs, yes, I got that right. Thanks.
Sure. I'll give it a try and then Bryce can jump in if I get something wrong. So property boundary verification. It does allow people to ignore their property lines if they want to build over it, to ignore the property line for purposes of the building code. So you're talking to planners. We we administer the zoning code, so it doesn't get them out of zoning requirements when there's a property line. So generally, in most cities across the country, it's not unusual. If you have, you know, numerous properties, you have property lines, you want to build over them, you consolidate your lot. You either do a replat process, where you record a plat and you get rid of those lines, or you do property line adjustments, you move those lines around, you get rid of them, and then you do the development. And in Salem, we have this process. Bryce spoke about property boundary verification. And it allows them to get a legal description of the outside boundary of their properties and record it. And then the building code, you know, pretends like the lines aren't there and then and then you don't have to do a firewall at that property line like you would normally have to do under the building code. So for some people, they want to go that route and it seems useful to them. I think in some of the examples, the example Mr. Shipman provided, he left out that the zoning code setback still applied to those property lines. And so in that development, they had to do numerous zoning adjustments to the property line to eliminate the requirement to have landscaping on both sides of the property line. And so that's an expensive process. And so that's an expensive process, the process that goes out for notice. It's a process that requires me to say that not providing landscaping at that property line is equally or better meeting the intent of the code, which requires landscaping there. And so how is it equally or better meeting it? Well, I have to assume that those properties are going to stay in common ownership, common ownership in one development forever. But there's nothing requiring that because just as easily as they recorded that legal description, they can go record two new legal descriptions with the county and then. You know, sell off the property where if you eliminate the property line, it's not there. You've got one property and there's no kind of confusion. Also, every person that does a property boundary verification is very confused about the fact that it doesn't help them with the zoning code. And so we just constantly have confused customers, arguments, meetings, you know, emails. I, I really need this thing. I've already, I've already, I don't have to meet your setback. I don't need your landscaping. I don't blah, blah, blah. And it's really difficult for us to just explain over and over and over, well, you solved one problem, but you didn't solve the larger problem, which is your property lines there. And the zoning code applies to them. So from our perspective, it causes more problems than it solves. If the council feels differently, you can, you know, keep it in and we'll, we've had it for twenty or thirty years and. We will survive with it. But from our professional opinion, it's, it's not a, a standard process. There's processes in the code that address this issue that applicants can use.
Councillor Hoy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have been in these chairs for going on four hours. And it's clear to me that we're not really anywhere near ready to deal with this. That it's clearly, we've got a lot more unresolved questions that, uh, I'm sure, I know I have several more and I know my colleagues probably do as well. So initially, I, my, my thought was to, uh, put, keep this open until next week, but now I'm wondering, is one week even reasonable? If we need to consider another plan? Or if we do it for a week, I'm maybe looking for Mr. Atchison's input here. Put it off for a week and then we can all, next week, we could put it off until our following meeting, which isn't until January. But I'm just seeking a little bit of guidance on my motion because we're clearly not ready to, uh, take this on.
Well, I, I would like help from Lisa as far as the, the, the timing of this and, and their needs. But you have a couple of options. Um, you can, uh, continue the hearing to a future date, take additional testimony. You could continue it to December thirteenth, you could continue it into January. Your other option would be to, to close the hearing and keep the record open, uh, for written testimony only. And that you could continue to the thirteenth or into January. It's either, it's at council's discretion.
And we, we don't have any timelines. There's not a, a deadline, you know, this month or next month. So whatever pleases the council is fine.
Is the.
Thank you.
Uh, the question I think too, uh. Thanks a response on leaving the, the, uh, hearing open. Uh, would we need to, we're talking about leaving it open for further public testimony. Is that what we would be thinking? Do you feel like, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I have no idea. We got a good turnout tonight. Uh, there's a lot of issues on the table. Would you like to hear from more public? Uh, more members?
I feel like, Mr. Mayor, that we're, we're getting ready to consider some pretty significant.
Yeah.
Amendments to the staff proposal. So it almost, it seems like it would be appropriate to allow for more public testimony to respond. To have an opportunity to respond to the things we've heard tonight, maybe provide alternatives, perspectives. You know, I just, I feel like we need to hear, we need to have more public testimony in this situation. That's my sense.
If I can interject at this point, if, if council would like to. You know, sort of do deliberations now and talk about some of these ideas. There, or give additional feedback to staff on what you're looking at. We can come back at a future date. I don't know that the thirteenth is going to be enough time for us to put all these ideas together and provide a report that you're actually able to read in the next six days. Um, but if you want to provide a little bit more feedback to us now as far as what you're looking for, we can perhaps come back in January with a supplemental staff report.
What if we, uh, Dan, what if we did that next, next week? We're going to be back together next week. It'll give people a chance to kind of, uh, consider what they've heard tonight, the kinds of issues that are on the table. And we could do that kind of interactive, uh, you know, give ourselves an hour or so to do a fairly, uh, or two, whatever. But we've been, we've been going, and I think as, as Chris pointed out, really quite a while on this. Um, is there a way to do that to kind of continue it? Allow the public in and allow us to have some more interaction with the staff.
The easiest.
And maybe look forward to January for some sort of action, really.
The easiest thing to do at this point, Mr. Mayor, would just be to continue the hearing to the thirteenth. And, uh, you can decide at that point, you know, what the next step will be.
So continue to next meeting?
Right, to December thirteenth.
Okay, Councillor Hoy, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we continue this hearing until the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Councillor Anderson got second. Um, go ahead, Chris.
Thanks. I just think that we have a lot to consider here. I think staff needs more direction from what we're thinking. I'm not sure anybody's ready to give that yet. I know I'm not. I'm thinking about a lot of different things that we've heard tonight. And I want to talk to staff about some of them, maybe, uh, in particular, but I also just want to take some time to, to think about some of these things in context. And, um, we just need some more time and we need some more time to be able to give staff some feedback on where we're headed.
I, I think the other thing, uh, to make sure is real clear, this also allows for public testimony. So if people want to come in and testify on this, uh, contact the city recorder and get on the list. Uh, we've still.
Yeah, we gave some.
We've only heard from ten people at this point, so.
And we gave some people some homework and it would be nice to be able to have some interaction with them rather than just reading, uh, with their feedback. So I would actually like to have a dialogue with Mr., uh, with a couple of folks, Mr. Erdman, Mr. Olson, perhaps Mr. Shipman, depending on what they come up with.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, uh, uh, sorry, Dan.
Sorry, last word freak. Um, just, just so you know, this is a legislative process, not a quasi judicial process. So you're welcome to read emails and have conversations with the constituents regarding this.
Great, great. Thank you. That's very helpful. Okay, is everybody ready to vote then on this? We'll continue this, we'll leave this hearing open, uh, and continue it through December, two, December thirteenth. And we'll make a decision on December thirteenth whether we'll continue this further. We're not done. Uh, so is everybody okay with that? Okay, uh, if, uh, Amy, could you call a roll?
Yes. Councillor Lewis is absent. Councillor Stapleton?
Hi.
Councillor Anderson?
Hi.
Councillor Phillips?
Hi.
Councillor Leung is absent. Councillor Gonzalez?
Hi.
Councillor Hoy?
Hi.
Councillor Nordike?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett?
Hi. Okay, motion passes. So. We'll continue that hearing next, next go round. We have special orders of business. Councillor, we'll start with five A. Councillor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm the City Council of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty to extend the declaration of emergency related to COVID nineteen until June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. And revise the restrictions on public gatherings.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. Anybody need to, you want to talk about it, Chris?
I don't have anything necessarily to say, but I would like to hear from, maybe a brief summary from Mr. Atchison or Mr. Powers.
Yeah. Steve, do you want to speak to this?
I, I think Dan can.
Dan's the guy. Okay.
Dan can speak to the reason, uh, we're recommending the extension.
Uh, thank you, uh, City Manager Powers. Um, so this is, simply extends the emergency declaration that expires, um, right in, in December, in, into June. Um, consistent with the state's most recent guidance, it lifts the restriction on a face covering as part of a public gathering. The other restrictions still stay in place. Uh, we believe in consultation with our emergency, uh, program manager. That it's necessary to keep the emergency declaration in place. Um, to keep our guidelines in place regarding, um, uh, sidewalk cafes and other outdoor functions for some of the downtown businesses. As well as some of our, uh, requirements for indoor masking at city facilities.
Great. Okay. Any further discussion? Hey, if the recorder would call a roll, please.
Councillor Stapleton?
Hi.
Councillor Anderson?
Hi.
Councillor Phillips?
Hi.
Councillor Leung is absent. Councillor Gonzalez?
Hi.
Councillor Hoy?
Hi.
Councillor Nordike?
Hi.
Councillor Lewis is absent. Mayor Bennett?
Hi. Okay, motion passes. We'll go to five B. Councillor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm the City Council of proven investments in response to the homeless emergency, specifically. Use of the city-owned navigation center building for a warming center, fund Safe Sleep United shelter expansion and help fund the Midland Valley Homeless Alliance.
Second. Second by who said that? Ah, Councillor Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, these are funds we had previously allocated for the, in general, for these purposes. Now this gets into a little bit more specific detail. Um, we have a critical need, uh, in all of these areas, uh, specifically regarding warming facilities. Uh, certainly regarding, uh, the services that Safe Sleep United provides to, to, uh. Women who are homeless in Salem, and we know that the number of homeless women outnumber than, uh, number of homeless men in Salem. And, uh, we have some, some things with the Midland Valley Homeless Alliance that this will further. Uh, would help the agenda along there. And I, I very much support, uh, the proposals here from staff. And I appreciate that they, uh, Mr. Powers put his forward.
Very good. Any, any questions or comments? Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll. Oh, was that you? Vanessa, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
No, that's all right. Um, I generally agree with everything in here because this is, uh, exploring ongoing usage of the shelter sites. The navigation center we've already approved. But what I want to look a little more carefully at is under the potential investments category. There is a very generalized topic that refers to response services. It shows state grant dash sheltering and unfunded, and that's in your materials for this agenda item. And the thing that I really want to draw people's attention to is the fact that earlier this year. We voted to approve setting some money aside for exploring crisis response, a mobile crisis unit. And this ten point five million dollars that we just received from the state, as I identified at a past council meeting. Can be used for operating costs for crisis response. And so what I don't see clearly articulated from this proposal. Is using that funds as we had already voted to do towards funding a pilot project for mobile crisis. Now that we have this money that we did not know about at the time that we passed the hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in seed money for a mobile crisis unit. We now have considerably more resources to not only fund a year of a pilot project for mobile crisis. But all of these other incredible sheltering opportunities. So what I would like to see is to have that clearly articulated in this document, which it currently is not. So the only amendment that I would make would be under the category where it says other potential investments, response services. I would like us to have more discussion about having the mobile crisis unit identified in there specifically. For a tiny piece of the ten point five million dollar grant that we received from the state. So if that's something that would take a motion to amend the proposal, I'm happy to do that. My intention was to talk to the city manager about putting a staff report together. To make sure that we know what that pilot project would look like on paper. Taking the, the details we already have from United Way. And making sure that we know how this would interact with the city. What would it look like? Who would run it? We have that proposal from United Way, but it's been a little while since we took a look at it. And so I wasn't sure whether to bring that motion at the end of the year or frankly, at the start of the year. But since the city staff has come back with this proposal tonight, with it drafted as is, it strikes me as an opportunity to bring it up. Now, to make sure that we are still on track with following through with that prior vote.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Amy, if you'll call a roll?
So I think what I'm not hearing is, I think it might be a little more helpful, perhaps City Manager Powers, maybe you can help explain to me. What do you mean when you have this where it says here under other potential investments and it says response services? It's kind of vague. And before I vote on this, I want to understand what, what is the intention behind that document? Does, are you, there's this funding for the pilot project that we previously discussed or not? That's what I'm unclear from the document.
Uh, certainly, uh, thank you, uh, councillor. Uh, our intent had been to bring to you, to bring to council one, one recommendation regarding this. As, as councillor Hoy said, the more specificity to the use of the, uh, federal and state funds, uh. The reference to the camp responses is. Under additional actions on page two of the staff report. And, and my intent is to bring to you next week. A, a recommendation that really focuses on the camp cleanup. If, if council wishes to change that, to have more of any, uh, outreach, uh, we can certainly consider that. Uh, the urgency, as, as council has discussed at, at previous meetings, is, is really with the management. Of, of some of our, uh, homeless, uh, residents. Uh, we have an estimated one thousand people, uh, living outdoors. Uh, we have some, uh, truly, uh, horrendous, uh, camping areas. That the city is spending an incredible amount of money and resources to, to manage, to clean up. Uh, that's taking staff away from other responsibilities. So the proposal is to use, recommendation will be that, that will be before you on the thirteenth. Will be to use some of those states and federal funds to, uh, uh, create a, a more of a rapid response. A cleanup team that would work with our police and our existing homeless outreach, uh, resources. Through the Salem Housing Authority and through our nonprofit partners. So we're doing the, the, the enforcement, the engagement. And these aren't necessarily in sequence, enforcement, the engagement, and then the, and then the cleanup.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Councillor Hoy? Are, are you okay, Vanessa? Can we go ahead and vote?
I just want to make sure I understand that what we're seeing is what appears to be a rough draft of how to spend the money. And I'm not prepared to commit to how we spend every last penny.
Right.
The ten point five million dollar grant. So that's what's not clear to me. By doing the vote, are we committing ourselves to that entire sum, leaving nothing left over? For the mobile crisis unit that we have been discussing as part of this council? That's my concern.
If I may, if I may, Mayor Bennett, the, the only actions for this evening were in, in the motion in the staff report. And frankly, there will be a, a, a later, uh, budget, uh, amendment that will be necessary. So this is your first bite at the apple. There will be a second bite at the apple sometime, probably in early January, kind of a, a budget cleanup. So I think there will be, uh, you know, ongoing opportunities for council if you choose to visit how. The city is, is spending the funds for, uh, specifically for the, the impacts of the pandemic. On our homeless residents and the homeless assistance, the sheltering assistance specifically. That has been provided to us from the Oregon Legislature.
Councillor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I guess just to sort of, uh. Respond to what councillor Nordike was asking. So as I understand the current situation. The budget committee and then the city council committed a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to mobile response. And that, and, and we had a part, a community partner who said that that's how much money they needed to make it work. And then they, then that changed because then they decided they couldn't actually deliver the program. And so now we are in a, please don't interrupt me until I, you're welcome to respond when I'm done, but I, I'm like right in the middle of a train of thought. So, and as I understand it, you know, that for whatever reason, and we could talk about the detail, don't, don't, don't necessarily do it here, but they're not. They're not available to deliver that program. And so we have been talking with how do we still deliver those services? Because I think everybody on this council voted. Because I think everybody on this council voted in support of a non-police response to mental health crisis and other crises. Uh, and I think as far as I know, everybody is continuing to support that concept. And I've been working to try to make, to figure out how to make that happen. Um, but I don't know that the, the model we had contemplated back when we made a $135,000 commitment is still viable since our community partner isn't, so, isn't ready to deliver on that. So we're trying to figure out what's another way to do that. That's my understanding of the current situation.
Yeah, and I, I feel that there, I don't think I share that interpretation. But I do think what this goes to show is there's a need to bring a motion to have city staff, you know, I lay it out for us so that we know what is the current situation, what are our current options going forward? How can we utilize funding for a pilot project for something that we voted for, something that's very much desired by the community? So I think it'll be important for us to take a look at that and understand what exactly the lay of the land is since last we talked about it in June. I think Councilor Upset has hand up.
Yeah, just a second. Are you done?
I am for now.
Okay, okay. Uh, Councilor Phillips?
Thank you. So I appreciate uh, both uh, Counselor Nordike uh, and Counselor Hoy's comments on this. Um, and I, I just want to make sure, you know, it is getting late and I'm, I'm getting a little tired. So I want to make sure that I'm, I'm voting on the correct thing here. Just big picture, tonight we're, we're, we're setting aside some specific funds. How much of the $10.5 million are we, we voting on tonight approximately? And how much is left over after we commit tonight's vote? That's my question to staff.
Gretchen, do you want to answer that?
Sure, tonight you're only committing the homeless alliance, the Safe Sleep United, and up to the maximum amount at the navigation center. So the, what those three add up to is, is the total that you're committing to tonight. The sheltering forecast document was provided, it just is a little bit of context. And we, we're going to go into more detail in the future meetings about response services and micro shelter sites.
And on the navigation center, the amount is for its use as a warming center this, this winter.
Okay, uh, the recorder called the roll.
And I, I appreciate that because it wasn't clear to me from the forecast how much we are committing to. And I'm still not hearing a hard number, but it doesn't sound like it's anywhere close to all of the 10.5. And that's what I wanted to make sure that I wasn't committing myself to for the night. So thank you, Gretchen. I appreciate the explanation.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote then. Recorder, please call the roll.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leung is absent. Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Nordike?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis is absent. Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. Information reports. They need more information? Okay, we'll move on then to first readings. And this is Counselor Hoy. Looks like you make this motion if I understand it right.
Okay.
I move City Council
Oh, pardon me. I need to do the script and then, yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Ordinance Bill number 1421 and ordinance relating to the City of Salem Ward Boundaries, amending SRC 11.231 and 11.232 and repealing SRC 11.233, 1.234, 1.235, 1.236, 1.237, 1.238, and 1.239.
Uh, good. Okay, sorry, Councilor Hoy.
It's all right. I move City Council Advance Ordinance Bill number 14-21, adopting use of City Council Ward Boundaries to second reading for enactment.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, this just codifies what we decided last time, chooses option number three, looks for future growth and uh, realigns our award boundaries. I think it's a good, I think it's a good proposal.
Okay. All right, uh, if the recorder please call a roll.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leung is absent. Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy? Councilor Nordike?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis is absent. Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. I don't see any other business, so there's no objection. We're adjourned.
For more videos and for more information, go to capitalcommunitymedia.org and follow us on social media.